Anexation.
Is it the same as she sent out earlier? I have it right there, the bottom one.
Well, I should.
It's totally up to you. Oh, okay, that's fine. I'll just go through it.
Yeah, Bill. We shouldn't be having this.
I agree.
You will go.
So it's what you received earlier this morning.
Yep. I haven't seen it, so. Okay, yeah.
Are we good? What do you think?
Yeah.
As soon as they get it there. Okay, Sarah. Yeah, let's see if we can make a little bit of space up there. We'll get you a seat. This is the revised annexation. Yeah.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Just start it, yeah. So we got one online.
There you go.
Yes. Wouldn't be good writing for public comment. Just want to mention, like, you'll need to read through it. Yeah. Okay, great. Okay, I'm just gonna sit here for.
How are we doing? Good?
Okay, we're good.
We online?
Yeah, yes.
All right, thanks for bearing with us, folks. We're gonna get going. Let's, we're planning commission this evening only. Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, let's do roll call. Filet. Here. Bomer.
Here.
Crevel.
Here.
Colby.
Here.
Dervison.
Here.
Bush.
Here.
Layton. He's here, he's not here, got it. Walsh.
Here.
Riggs.
Yeah.
Homquist.
Here.
Assent.
Here.
Hodges.
Here.
Sherwood. All right, any amendments to this agenda? No?
No, but we will note that there have been some changes to the staff reports, specifically to the annexation and subdivision staff reports that were emailed to planning commission earlier today. In the presentation, Kristen will go over the proposed changes to the recommended conditions based off of additional information that we've received from the applicant and from staff.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. I believe that given the amount of information that we've received in the last three hours, that this meeting should be moved to a date certain because I don't think that people have had time to adequately go over the information. I'd like to know how many people have gone over it at all.
I have not seen it, but I would say we would get through the presentation and if there's things that we can't decipher from there, then I think we can, I think we can hear what they have to say and make our decision.
And hear the public at least.
Be great. Okay. Yeah. Minutes from June 10th, 2025, I believe, it wasn't on the date on the, but I believe that's June 10th. June 10th. We have minutes to approve.
Mr. Chairman, there's an error on the minutes. The motion recommended by staff to move to Zone R2 was approved, but not 7-0, it was 5-2.
So you're making, you're making, making a motion to?
Make a motion to amend those minutes to that effect.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the minutes to a 5-2 vote.
You're talking about the zoning of the Gran Zala, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That was for R3, actually. Yeah.
Right.
Correct.
To change it from.
Right.
The staff.
Change that in the minutes.
From R2 to R3.
Do we need a roll call on that or just call?
As amended, I believe you can just do the approval.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Those that approve. On the, okay, a motion and a second on the amendment to the minutes from June 10th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So now we may get a motion to approve those minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the amended minutes from June 10th.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the amended minutes from June 10th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Are there any unscheduled citizens this evening? That would be anybody here to not, to speak to something that is not on the agenda. Okay, anybody online?
Can you check online, just see if? If anybody online would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand in the chat. Okay. We're not seeing anything.
Okay. All right, with that, let's move on to our public hearings. I'm gonna just say this evening, there's obviously a bunch of people here, there are three hearings this evening, one for the annexation, one for the zoning, and one for the major impact review of the major subdivision. So when you come up to speak, keep in mind that we want to hear comments on that specific item and not just general. So when we do this, when we do the annexation, if you have a comment on annexation, come up then, and then we would ask that you not come up each time and repeat. If you have something new on, on that other section, you are more than welcome to come up and speak, but we'd like to not repeat ourselves this evening. Thank you. Yes, thank you, and we will be adhering to the three-minute limit this evening as well. All right, the first hearing is the recommendation on proposed Mesa Ridge annexation.
And just as a note, I just passed out the amended staff report so that the public can be aware of some of the changes as well. Yep, please just spread it around and have enough for everybody, but please feel free to share with your neighbor.
All right, good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public. Thank you all for being here this evening. We have a number of presentations to get through tonight, all related to the same project. So the first one up, we have the recommendation on proposed 7305 County Road 160, also called the Mesa Ridge Annexation. So going over the property and location, this is 2.3 acres located at 7305 CR 160. The adjacent CR 160, also known as Crestone Avenue, has already been annexed. The applicant High Desert Development, represented by Kenny Layton, has completed, has submitted a complete application to annex the property, and a conceptual review was held with City Council and Planning Commission on February 3rd, 2025. Next slide, please. So this is just the basics, showing that the state mandated annexation process will be followed, pretty standard procedure. The next slide is also standard procedure, findings of fact. So the, the property is within the municipal services area. It can be serviced by city, by city police and fire, and the property is a natural extension of the city's municipal boundary. Under referral process, the referrals were sent out as according to our regulations, and they were sent out for the annexation, the zoning, and the subdivision, kind of as one. So Public Works wanted to make sure that the applicant communicates with the other utilities companies and has their plans and easements defined before the plating gets approved. Finance and school are pretty basic answers here. System development fees have to be paid, a time of building permit, and the school district will accept fees in lieu of land. Visionary broadband had some questions to the applicant regarding some of the existing lines on the property and what might exist, and just kind of reassurance that, that they would work with the utility companies on those easements. So part of the reason that we're bringing up this conceptual development proposal inside the annexation agreement is that some of the conditions for the annexation agreement have been catered to what has already been proposed as part of the major subdivision. So the applicant team has provided staff with this concept proposal for a future subdivision and development of the land, and the applicant team anticipates a total of 10 residential lots. These lots can contain anywhere between 11 and 17 units is what is expected at this time. So again, that's important because once we go into the conditions of the annexation that have been recommended by staff, that's taking into account what has been discussed with the applicant team. This next slide shows that subdivision plat proposal right now, so you can see those lots, the residential lots right now are kind of all facing the CR 160 Crestone Avenue right-of-way. And then in the back, there's currently an outlot shown for the purposes of a trail, and we're gonna go a little bit more into detail that in a minute. So want to apologize in advance for some of these wordy slides, but it's really critical that we kind of nail down some of these conditions in the annexation agreement because of those proposed subdivision plat, concept proposals that we have received. So the first important thing to note here is the inclusionary housing requirement. Staff is suggesting, based on the applicant's request, to have both for sale or for rent inclusionary housing units as an option for them, which staff is seeing is kind of the trend for the market right now, is a little bit more demand for inclusionary housing units to be for rent. We've kind of come up with this compromise where we've allowed two different options for the applicant team to follow, or a future developer, if this proposed subdivision were to not go through as planned, these would still be an option for a future developer on the land. So we are providing two options, like I said. Option A is mostly a strict application of the code, two for-sale units at 130% AMI average, completed before the sixth market rate unit. Nothing out of the ordinary for this first one. If we go to the next slide, we go over option B, and this is this for rent option that we're kind of giving, as you know, annexation is an agreement, it's a negotiated agreement, and so this is one of the options that we're giving the developer of this annexed land. So there is a required minimum of two inclusionary housing units to be provided, which is based at the 11-unit minimum, which is anticipated at the future development. A third rental unit may be required if additional units are providing, provided, maxing out at the 17 units. This language also discusses the maximum AMI levels, which do follow our, our current code requirements. The units would need to be rented out by the developer or a qualified nonprofit housing developer, such as Shapie Housing Trust. Similar to the previous slide, the two inclusionary housing units would also need to be complete before the sixth market rate unit. And then we have one more. No, back, still on the slide. A deposit and dimensional standards would follow the code requirements. So the, the main thing out of the ordinary here is that typically our code requires proportional inclusionary housing units, whatever you're building on the property, if it's for-sale units, your inclusionary housing units also need to be for sale. Here, we're proposing a second option where we're saying, okay, we understand some of your units will be for sale, but your inclusionary housing units could be for rent if you follow these requirements. And it's a little bit adjusted to make sure that the IH units that are being proposed or provided are like a maximum of what could be provided on the site. I know that's a lot of words, so I'm happy to answer questions at the end. All right, on the next slide here, regardless of which option is chosen, A or B, both of these conditions would still apply. So if the lots were dedicated to a qualified nonprofit housing developer, they don't have to pay those deposits, that's pretty standard for us. And then number three here, we have the development of the lots shall be limited in total number of allowed units per lot, so that the inclusionary housing units provided satisfy the code requirements. Dwelling units in excess of this allotted amount would have to pay the fee in lieu at the .9 rate prior to certificate of occupancy. And we have actually done this in a couple of subdivisions so far in Salida, and we have seen it with, we have seen it meet success. So we're kind of copying that same language and going to apply it to this subdivision. An example of this would be River Ridge.
I'm gonna jump in real quick, and I just want to make sure everybody understands that these conditions, especially number three, is based off of this range of units, number of units that has been provided by the, by the applicant. And so, as you all know, the code currently requires one out of six units to be inclusionary housing. So the two units, if they were for sale, would satisfy the requirements for up to 12 units in total. This third condition just takes it into account in case there end up being more than 12 units out there, right? So that's where we get that .9 rate, just in case it was unclear.
Thank you, Bill. All right, so next slide, thank you. These are pretty standard conditions, just noting that all other applicable fees will be paid at the appropriate times, and that the developer will complete the curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the Crestone Avenue right-of-way. All right, parks and open space. This one also is a little bit lengthy, and I'll, I'll start by saying that from the beginning, the, the city has made clear that there will be a requirement for trail connection on this property, connecting the, let's see what I have on here, connecting Poncha Boulevard to some of the trails that happen on the other side of the hospital property. So I'm just gonna kind of briefly go over this, and I know you haven't all read it yet, and I apologize for, this is one of the last-minute things that's been changed, and it's kind of coming because of this change to the 11 units instead of the 17. The previous staff, staff report was kind of focusing on that 17 number, and then if the developer weren't to build all 17 of the units, wouldn't quite get the same amount of value out of it. So this is a little bit more of an equitable approach. So again, taking into account that 11-unit number, we have, our current code requires .02 acres per unit as a dedicated open space requirement for subdivision. So this would, this would result in .22 acres required for dedication. The space required to construct the trail is estimated to be about .28 acres. This came also from the applicant teams on the civil side, and we can confirm these numbers when, when we get a revised plat. But the space required to construct the trail, estimated to be .2 acres, will satisfy 11 units to be built inside the subdivision. No additional credit for units will be permitted. So basically, we're capping them at the 11, 11 units, and then similar to the inclusionary requirement that we went over regarding allowed, allowed number of units per lot, that same exhibit in the subdivision improvement agreement will be a part of the parks and open space. So one per lot, and then the first lot, which is going to serve inclusionary housing, or potentially would serve the inclusionary housing units, would be allowed two units. So I don't know how easy it is to flip back to the original plat, but there's 10 residential lots. Lot number one, right now is proposed to have the two inclusionary lots on it, or units on it, and lots two through 10 are proposed to have one, one unit each. That's how we get our 11-unit number. So any, any number of units on each lot over their allowed amount would pay the open space fee in lieu in, in place at the time of building permit, and would be due at the time of building permit as well. All right, that was a lot of words also, and I'm sorry about that, but those are the staff recommended conditions. And on the last slide, we have the recommended motion, and I think I'm, I'm ready to take questions now.
All right, questions for Kristen?
Is the trail is an easement, not an outlot? Is that covered in the next phase of what we're talking about?
It's a little bit more explicit in the subdivision agreement. It's currently drawn as an outlot, but the city does not want dedicated land outside of the trail.
So should that be in the annexation agreement, then?
It is, I mean, this is one of the conditions, so number seven does say it will accept an easement of the area of the trail itself, excluding the construction areas and other land not associated with the trail. So just easement of the trail.
But it doesn't say that there won't be an outlot. Right?
No, so if it is just an easement, oh, I'm sorry. Believe the applicant will speak to that later, but as we understand the intention, it's understood what the desire of the city is, and the applicant would intend to extend the lot lines to the back of the entire property in this case, and the easement would go through the property, similar to what we have for the River Trail.
Sure, and I, and I understand that, I guess my only question is, should that be noted in the annexation agreement in the event that this applicant, for some reason, doesn't develop the land? We've had that before, where if it's not in the annexation agreement, then, you know, we're tied to that. I'm just asking if it should also be included in the annexation agreement? And it may not be, I'm just asking the question.
Go ahead.
I think it provides some flexibility, like, there is still the opportunity for an outlot to be created, it just wouldn't be dedicated to the city. So it could remain in the HOA's.
Okay.
Hands. And it's just important that the city either owns exactly the confines of the trail itself, the 10-foot wide stretch, or, or it's just an easement, and the city does not get any dedicated land.
Okay.
Sure, I have a question. Mostly around the kind of late-breaking changes, basically, we're just trying to have flexibility is kind of what I'm understanding, but protect the city in case we do go to 17 units, we're accounting for the open space and the IH requirements. Is that a fair summary?
Yeah, it is, yeah. And not, and not penalizing the developer for over-contributing if they don't build up to their anticipated maximum.
But in other words, we're starting at 11, we could end up at 12 or 15, and we would calibrate accordingly.
Exactly, yes, yeah. And that's what the additional fee in lieu on, in, on top of the 11 units kind of captures.
Makes sense, thank you.
Question. Brian?
Typically, this annexation agreement wouldn't have this level of detail, and we would simply be going through the process of identifying whether this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And this just happens to be the additional information, which is going to be further explored through the, the development and the zoning.
That's correct, yes. And, and to clarify too, if, if the developer's current plan for subdivision doesn't go through, they could always do an annexation amendment as well to, to change this language. It would have to go through this kind of process again, but this isn't like, you know, committing this forever kind of thing, until a change happens.
Yeah, the purpose in this particular instance is to sort of memorialize the city's desire for the trail and the specifics around the trail, and to memorialize the, the minimum number of inclusionary housing units, regardless of what gets built out there.
Question on the trail. This is to be a connector trail to the existing trail that currently parallels, essentially parallels Route 160. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. There's also a future trail that's planned right now on the west side of the golf course to create that connection between Poncha and.
I, I don't understand the need for this, since there is already a connection to that trail less than three tenths of a mile from the entrance to Cottonwood Green, and it would seem to me that it would make a lot more sense for the developer to pay a fee in lieu, and this could be used to develop other non-redundant trails.
I'll speak for Park Director Post, had that conversation with him about that very item. For one, the, I think, are you referring to the Angler Trail that's close to Franz Lake?
No, I'm referring to the trail that goes from the hospital to, I guess, the Angler Trail.
There's, so there's a trail that is public access called the Angler Trail that goes down to Franz Lake, and that is at the, further down CR 160, at 145, I believe it is there. There's another trail in the middle of it that is on hospital property, but to the best of our knowledge, it's actually not a public access trail. And that might be the one that you're referring to.
I am, so what's, so is all of the land to the, I guess that's the north of that trail, hospital land?
It is, yeah.
And so, do we have an agreement with the hospital to allow access to that trail?
We don't have, we do not currently have an agreement for public access that.
So we're building a trail that we theoretically can't use?
No, I'm sorry, so in one of the conditions of the subdivision plat, as you'll see, is that, and I believe it was in the original staff report as well, that the applicant must get an agreement with the hospital to build that connector. And there have been conversations with the hospital in the past.
But why wouldn't we use the existing connectors?
Well, I mean, and I'm speaking for Parks Director. The area immediately across the street from the future planned trail on the west side of the golf course, this is a much easier access.
Oh, come on, it is, I disagree with that.
Now we're just getting into discussion, argument. Let's stick to questions, and then we can get into discussion.
Can I ask one?
Absolutely.
Can you help me understand, like, the difference between A and B, and when they would need to build a third unit, and when they would just pay the fee? Because B, part of B, part of option B has a third unit, but A doesn't. And then you got number three that you explained, which you might need to explain to me again.
It's okay, so it's a great question, and it's again coming back to this flexibility of wanting to provide the applicant with a for-rent option and kind of finding a compromise. So A is just strict application of the code. And we're saying, this is still an option for you, should you desire to follow just the code. If you are going to build 11 units, so our code requirement right now is one of every six units should be built as inclusionary housing. So if you are building 11 units, you need one point.
Five, six.
Don't ask me to do math on the spot. And if you're building, if you're building up to 17.
It's over two. The point being that under two, if it's under 12, and it's over two, if it's over 12, right? And the other part of what you're saying, as far as the strict application of the code, if you recall, the code says that if it is a for-sale project, that the unit shall be for-sale unless otherwise approved by council. So this is an example where they're asking to make the inclusionary housing units a different housing type than the rest of the market-rate units. They're asking to make them into rental units, which is the.
Got it, which we're allowed to do under the code.
We're allowed to do it.
City Council's allowed to do it.
But you're also allowed, through an annexation agreement, to ask for more as part of that agreement. Allowed for that particular use.
So we're saying if you do rentals, we want more than if you do for-sale?
That is what we are suggesting in this particular case, and is a recommended condition.
Kristen, you kind of very briefly mentioned that you've been seeing more demand on sort of the resident side for for-rent inclusionary housing. Can you expand on that a little bit more?
Bill, do you know if Marjo has provided us with any recent documents? Or, yeah, I think part of it is just that we've seen some of our for-sale inclusionary housing units struggle to sell. And we do know that the applicant pool for rental units is much larger than the applicant pool for the for-sale inclusionary housing units.
We had one very notable exception to that, or example of that, and, you know, I think that, if I'm not mistaken, are you, in this recommendation, trying to make sure that whether it be for sale or rental, that an IH unit actually occurs? That it's not sitting vacant for lack of whatever reason unable to be sold?
Yes.
That was the situation, I think.
I just, your last bullet there on slide, under B, you said it could be sold in the future, and I don't think there's any restriction on that. They could be sold, they could be rented for a year, then sold, five years, then sold, like, that's pretty open-ended.
Under this condition, yes. That would allow for the developer to rent it as long as they wanted to.
With the IH requirement.
But it would remain inclusionary.
It remains IH.
It remains IH if it's sold.
And I think hasn't Chaffee Housing Trust had that situation where they've built property, rented it for a year, and then while they're qualifying people to buy it, then they would sell it?
Exactly.
There's evidence that that's a helpful thing.
What is the maximum number of units that could be built on this property?
That's a really tricky question to answer, and it's because the plat is not confirmed. If an outlot doesn't happen, then each lot increases in size, and there's just a number of other factors. The steep slope at the back likely prohibits a lot of construction. By my calculation, I think if the R2 zoning, which we haven't gotten to yet, were to be approved, I think you could roughly build 25 units in this area, per code.
Per code? And we don't know how many unit, I mean, we have the developer saying he thinks he's going to do this. Is there anything we're doing tonight that would preclude him from building up to 25 units?
The 17.
I mean, you could put something into the agreement that creates a maximum.
Yeah.
That's fine, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not for staff.
Okay.
Probably the lot front.
Actually, I just thought of one.
Go for it.
On the kind of question of the trails, this is all based on, I think, our trails or our parks master plan, right? There's a plan behind where we want trails and how we're doing this.
I wish that our master plan would call it out a little bit better, honestly. There are other documents. Our Parks Department, at this point, relies a lot on Trust for Public Lands analyses on existing parks and connectivity, and they utilize that to identify areas that need connections, need parks. We do have the Sylida Regional Transportation Plan from 2013 that does call out a connection in this general area between CR 160 and the hospital area. The plan for the trail on the west side of the golf course, that's frankly more of an internal plan discussion, because it is city-owned property, and hasn't made it onto any of those policy documents, but we're kind of putting all the pieces together here.
One follow-up to what Giff was mentioning. Where in the process would it be best to insert, if we should want to, a maximum number of units? Would it be best to insert it in the annexation agreement?
Yes.
Good question. Okay, any other questions this time?
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, applicant?
Good evening. Do we have those slides ready?
Which one do you want?
The one labeled Annex. And the, you know, we can breeze through the first few. There are basically repeats of what Kristen just shared. You know, here's a subject property. Slide two shows that we're in the MSA. Go ahead. This is the future land use map that shows this area of town designated for HRE or VR. Those are the terms used in the new land use code. The same is essentially R3 or R2 zoning for this area. Excuse me. And then this shows the surrounding zoning. You'll notice that the hospital borders to the north. All the properties surrounding this property are currently zoned R2. There's additional R3 beyond that and in some other areas. And then across the golf course on, you know, the existing part of the Mesa, the core of the Mesa, that's R1. A couple, yeah, a couple comments on the discussion so far, and I can get back to them, but, you know, the trail has always been a requirement for annexation by the city. We've never entertained the option of paying fees. We've made great, we've had great conversations with SPOT and with SMT in support of this trail. You know, we think it's a great community benefit, but it, you know, I think it's important to note that it's always been communicated to us that that would be a condition of the annexation. Some of the, and I can get to, I can get to that on the next, if we want to go to the next slide, maybe while I'm on this topic. This shows the trail space that will be credited. We've had this trail engineered by our engineer so that it's appropriately graded and, you know, maintained, you know, built for, to account for drainage, et cetera. We had always thought that it would be easier, even though we would only be getting credit for that green space, that it'd be easier and simpler to just dedicate the remaining little pockets of land that are beyond the trail. I don't know if, basically, right here and right here. We don't have an HOA plan for this neighborhood. It's a smaller, you know, there's 10 lots in this neighborhood. We had, you know, but the Director of Parks was very clear that he wanted an easement versus a dedication, and so that's where this last-minute clarification was. This language showed up this week. So in conversations, you know, our revised subdivision agreement, which we're not discussing right now, will just extend those lot lines to the northern boundary, and will create that easement, you know, for the Parks Department. And if we go back to this previous slide, Donna Rhodes is here, she's the president of SPOT. I asked her to come just to share the history of, you know, the trail system that SPOT has been able to advocate for and create, and, you know, she's been at work, along with some members of SMT, in conversations with the hospital and the city for a number of years, and I think, you know, she's, she has all the ins and outs of the history of the trail and the desire for it, so. Donna, did you want to?
Donna Rhodes, Sylida. I am the president of SPOT. This is our, on here is the map. All the red are the trails that we've been building for now, what, 35 years? I guess we started like in the 90s, started with the abandoned railroad right-of-way, the Monarch Spur. We did 120 all the way from Sylida to Poncha, and in recent years, we also put in the concrete trails on 140 and 160. Other connections have been around. We have also worked with the county municipalities, trying to plan out connections, written grants, and help fund and plan for the whole county. So I guess SMT's more the slight mountain trails, we're more in-town trails, and this trail in particular is what we are considering a community connector. Originally, Nathan Young owned the property, and it came, when he was annexing in, this came to light, and that trail became a plan. And we then involved the city, we involved the county, we involved the hospital to figure out how to get, and in reality, the idea was to get from the Mesa down to the hospital gazebo, and along the trail on the west side of the hospital that borders CPW land, and that trail goes directly to 153, which allows a rider or pedestrian or bicyclist to go either to Franz Lake, Sand Lake, without having to go around. So it was a direct, that was the main thing, it was a connector that way. That, yes, you can see it, it's that line that goes, the big field is CPW land, exactly. And that trail, we worked, this was in 2022, SPOT worked with CPW and the hospital, because that trail was so low that it was seeping water from their irrigation over and flooding the hospital. So there was kind of this thing going on, and it took a couple of years, but we got it figured out, and the county came in as well. We bermed it up, we wrote grants to get money, bermed it up, and the water is now being dammed, so to speak, goes down to the river through a culvert that the county put in. So we're prepared for that trail now to connect there, and that was, that was the feeling. The, if the golf course one comes in later, that, so be it, but where it connects, you can see there are a lot of homes, and it seems like there are people that would just love to jump on that and go down that side of the hill. There are, the other trail that the hospital put in, they put it in in 2018. We had a meeting with the hospital, the new hospital, see, we have a new owner now of the property and a new hospital president. He, we brought him up to speed today, Kenny and I went and saw him, and he was in favor of it, he feels like it's a good idea. He will get with his board to get the little connected piece necessary to get it connected. We told him about the other trail, he wasn't terribly familiar with it yet, and he's going to be. We've walked it, I've talked to people in the neighborhood. You've got Angler Trail on one side, Mesa on the other, and you do have this trail that goes down to the same spot, literally. If it weren't so steep, and it were made so you could ride it, it is really, really steep. It's just not, not, it's a huge grade, I forget what it was, but at this point, putting the trail where it is, it's already figured out, it's been engineered. I think the city backing is probably the biggest push for it. They'll sign it, they'll maintain it, so, yeah, I'm not sure. I think that Kenny Layton has very graciously taken over a trail project that came before him, so, yeah, I'll work with you and whatever's decided.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Let's see, go back to the slides. Next slide. So we covered that. So here's our two requests. You know, I got a little lost on all the inclusionary housing. Our thought, our plan is to partner with CHT to build two units, have them obtain them, and then they would rent them out until they, their long-term goal is to provide for-sale units, but in the interim, you know, they can have the flexibility to rent those units or sell them as they have qualified buyers. You know, and in talks with staff, they recommended that these two requests be put in the annexation agreement, which is why we see them here today. You know, Reed and Bill Hussey, our engineer, is also online, they're both here today. There's a letter from CHT as well in your packet that you should be able to review. The trail connection we've covered, the 10-foot parcel, this, our request for dedication, you know, we can kind of disregard that. The plat shows the trail we're planning on, and if, you know, commission approves, the staff recommendation is the easement. We're not, you know, we're pretty flexible on that aspect of it. And then if we could, you know, I wanted to comment on the open space calculation, and forgive me, Bill and Kristen, I did not review those numbers. Those came out just a couple hours ago, that calculation, to clear that up for us. By my calculation, our dedication area is 0.28 acres, which would account for 14 units. So we have not had discussions on why we're being only credited 11 units. So we have not had discussions on why we're being only credited 11 units. You know, we would request that we get credit for the 14 units that we could, you know, that land would account for 14 units if we built more in the future. Any questions?
Questions with Kenny?
I have one. You mentioned just now that there was no HOA planned.
I mean, we'll have covenants, but we don't have, you know, there's.
So my question though, is if there's no HOA planned, who would maintain what I'll call the wild area down the hill? Because the city is only taking care of the trail itself, is that correct?
Yep.
But not any of the other land?
We don't believe that area is going to need very much maintenance. However, under the new proposed plan, that would be the responsibility of each individual property owner.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe we come up with some while we discuss. Thank you.
Thanks, Kenny. Public comment. All right. Like I said before, we can go through this. I don't have a note on here what you're here to discuss, but if you want to just waive your time to comment on further, or if you'd like to come up now, that's fine too. But right now, we are really looking for comments on the annexation, which includes what we've discussed tonight, so far. So we're going to go ahead and open the public comment and Paul Jensen is first.
Paul, wait to speak about the subdivision.
Okay. I'm going to make a note that you. Wendy Rumbold?
I guess I'll follow Paul.
Loretta Groover?
So I'm a bit confused. No one from your staff said that I needed to chunk up my response into zoning.
Please, would you please come to the, just come to the, so we can get you on tape and all? And maybe we can help you with when you would like to do your comments.
So I'm Loretta Groover. I live at 7285 County Road 160 with my husband. We have a ranch home that's 65 years old, a garage, and we built an ADU for our daughter and her family that sits right behind our garage on the ridge. I wrote this letter and I'd like to read it, but now that you're asking that, we might segment it parts into zoning comments and, you know, what a subdivision review. I'm a little confused.
You can, we'll still hear your comments for, why don't you just go ahead and make your comments?
I tried to separate it as everyone was talking and I felt like I was having a migraine back here. I was like, help me God.
Yeah, that's confusing. Yeah, why don't you just go ahead and make your comments like you would like?
Okay. Thank you for being flexible. I need to give my glasses? Thank you. This is a bit hard for me. I'm a second grade teacher. My husband and I are long-term Salida educators. So I speak before children and it's hard for me to see all these official people and all their intentions and motivations, but I just want to tell you how it's going to affect me and my neighbors. Okay? I have four exhibits I'd like to submit for the public record tonight. I did not quite know how to do that, so if I could submit them now, I won't forget and have to bother Kristen later. Okay, I'll just try to read this quickly. If I run out of time, my husband's going to take over and finish our letter, if that would be okay. Okay, as longtime Salida residents and educators, we're shocked to see an application for such a dense subdivision on a small parcel of land right in the middle of what is critical wildlife habitat on the ridge of the Mesa. This land is unique and should be protected and preserved, not exploited. All sorts of animals move daily from the wetlands in the riparian lands below to the Mesa and back again, seeking food, shelter, and space. For most of the year, we see 25 to 30 deer migrating daily to the top of the Mesa where they cross County Road 160 right in front of my home. Another concern is that there is not sufficient supporting structure to maintain the hill's stability. We're worried that building 11 to 17 units in such a small space will cause adverse impact and the hill will slide. The existing homes on the ridge should not be put in peril of any risk from this possible impact. We object to R2 zoning. If granted, these 11 to 17 units will be created without parking space between the lots. Parking will be a nightmare as at least two cars from each of these 11 to 17 units will be stacked in front of the subdivision along County Road 160, further deteriorating the character of the Mesa, lowering our property values and creating a public hazard. The road is already narrow and congested at times. The developers say they'll widen County Road 160, and we also object to anyone taking part of our front yard to widen this road. The density of this proposed subdivision is exacerbated because a big chunk of the 2.3 acres of land cannot be built upon. The ridge and the hillside are steep, unstable, and dangerous. There's also a crater on the west side of the Hill Homestead, which used to be a trash dump years ago, and this area is sliding down the hillside. When it rains heavily, will toxins from the dump flow into the new trail below, causing a public hazard and contaminating the wetlands below? It's obvious that a subdivision of this density is obscene and does not fit the character of the Mesa. Packing in 11 to 17 units in approximately 600 feet of frontage on County Road 160 is unacceptable. At present, the row of eight single-family residents and one vacant lot on the east leading to this development, each has approximately 120 linear feet of frontage. This would suggest only three to four units being built on this site. In order to lower the fees, these developers want to build a new trail across a part of land that isn't even theirs to make the trade. If approved, the plan is for the new trail to be placed precisely on our west property line with no setback whatsoever on a public utility and drainage easement. And it's now also being labeled as open space trail access, so the developers can use every square inch of their land to create more heavily congested lots. Our garage and ADU lie within a few feet of the utility pole on the northwest corner of our property. This new trail will start at the southwest corner of our property line at County Road 160 and move north to the ridge right next to our garage and ADU before it curves to the west along the ridge and then down the hill. So coming up the hill and going down, users of the trail will be within arm's reach of our garage and ADU. The public will easily look through the windows and see the living room and kitchen of the home. That's an intrusion of our privacy, safety, and security. Furthermore, another safety concern is that first responders will not be able to reach at times.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, I have to cut you off. We've gone.
Okay. My husband signed in. Could he finish our letter?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I have three minutes?
You do.
Oh, thank you. As she said, "Further, another safety concern is that the first responders will not be able to reach people hurt while using this new trail since there isn't as designated road leading to the base of the hill." Additionally, small prey, which there is many on that hill, will likely move away, which will further endanger the red-tailed hawk and owls in the area. Already, the hospital destroyed a bunch of cottonwoods down there. They lied about it. The real reason that they did it was because of their exhaust system, but they gave many excuses. A lot of red-tailed hawk and owls are gone now. A lot of foxes as well. This is just going to further push them out, push out the wildlife for a developer. Instead of building a new trail, the commission should require the developers to trade Lot 10 for lower fees in order for that area to be designated as a wildlife corridor. Not the Donna Rhodes Trail, not the trail around it. Got to have it here, got to have it there. As you pointed out, just down the road, you can go. Just down the road over here, you can go. Come on, you don't need this trail. You do not need it. The developers should build an eight-feet concrete wall so there is a barrier if they choose to go ahead and do this. This wall should have a depth of at least two feet and be built on the length of our joining property along County Road 160. The concrete wall should be attractive, inspected yearly, and maintained by the city. If the new trail is so desirable, in your view, then we request that it be placed in the middle of the subdivision while also creating a corridor for wildlife on the east side of the subdivision. From the middle, the new trail should move to the west as it traverses the hill, not in the direction of our homes. If you don't want the developers to forfeit all of Lot 10 for the wildlife corridor, then there should still be a concrete wall. This would provide at least a 30-foot total setback from our property line to the point of the concrete wall. And I'll say something about this trail. We have never been consulted. We have never been approached by the city of Salida. Neighbors, you're going to see you put a trail right, right up against my property and you never approach us and entertain us in the conversation? That is just abominable. Another concern is that the highest point of the land adjacent to us in Lot 10 is much higher than the elevation of the land where our home and garage is. This is going to cause some damage from water and flooding. The plan of their plans is you're going to put in utilities, water, and a trail, all in 10 feet. Whoa. As a commission, you have due diligence to protect the residents of the Mesa and prioritize the needs of wildlife. You should be requesting your own engineering study and environmental impact study and seek the advice of conservation agencies such as Carter Parks of Wildlife, EPA, and the Colorado State Forest. You also have an obligation to visit this area as you are able to thoroughly investigate it, to see the risks. And the final thing I want to say is that dump probably has some things in it that you're really totally unaware of. You're going to disturb it, you're going to get it wind blowing, and you could cause some serious health concerns. Mary Ann Hauser?
Is it useful right now? Can I just?
It's up to you.
Let's do a little bit of both.
Come on up.
You can, you can. If I may, Mr. Chairman, if, since we're having one sign-in sheet, you can speak to whatever you want, but don't come back the next hearing and say it again. So if you're going to speak to the annexation and the subdivision at the same time with three minutes, that's fine. Otherwise, come back during the next segment and have a little more time for that specific thing.
During the next segment, I might have more information.
But if you have, if you have new information, that's just fine.
Okay.
Okay.
My name is Mary Ann Hauser, and I live at 7455 County Road 160, which is also adjacent to the development in question. I'm objecting because I need more time to gather facts and information. I suggest we delay this process until there is more regulatory advice. Every person's going to have their own reasons for objecting. Some of mine are a decrease in my real estate value, a negative impact on my quality of life, loss of privacy, light pollution, increased noise and traffic, risk to my water, damage to my property. The land where the hospital is located used to be a wetland, and then it wasn't. Nobody can argue against a hospital. A hospital is the largest and best use of land and an asset to the community. This is different. This is pure profit, and why let a developer profit from it? The city should be spooked by potential liability. The immediate risks are slope instability. I think everyone knows the story about the house on County Road 111. Partial, potential toxins from an old dump site, erosion, and damage to my water right. The city and the public should be worried about future costs and see a bigger picture. We already suffer from an increase in power and internet interruptions. Is our wastewater facility adequate for an increase in population? What about water? It is a high desert. Who will pay for new schools and new infrastructure? It won't be a developer, it will be us. This is the last place on the Mesa with a view to the north. Salida markets itself as a mountain town, yet we don't have any parks that have mountain views. I propose the highest and best use of this land is a park. The city wouldn't have any liability. I want the city to listen to their constituents. The gain of a few tax dollars and some sewer tap fees can't bring that back something that's gone. Be very, very careful. And I'd like to reserve the ability to amend my public comment until I've gathered more scientific analysis. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jane Elmore, 302 West Park Avenue, the quarter, corner of Park and Pitkin. I live approximately a half mile from this proposed new development. I am shocked that the planning committee would consider building, having somebody build that many residents up there on the Mesa. The Mesa has a wonderful, wonderful feel to it. It has a sense of community and a sense of real elegance. I've lived there for 40 years and I'm proud to live where I live. I am shocked that you would take the last piece of open property on the Mesa and cram a bunch of residential houses in there when you have areas in Pontcharl Springs and areas in the east side of Salida where, yes, you're building small, close-together residents. That's fine. People need housing. I understand that. But as a planning committee, I think you have the obligation to look at the city as a whole and to recognize that this part of the city is something really special. And as MA pointed out, this area is the only place where you can look out and see the mountains and see the valley down below. It's a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful piece of property, and I think it would be just a crime to put 11 to 17 residences in there. There's enough other places on the outside of the community where these people can live, can build houses, rental houses, where developers can do the kinds of things that this man is talking about doing. I think it is totally inappropriate. I've lived there for 40 years and I saw when they developed, what is it, Cottonwood Green. Those houses fit the feel of the Mesa. They're nice houses with nice lots, flowers, trees. And then we saw the development on, what's the next one down? I forgot. Yeah. And that's fine too. I mean, those are lovely places where people can live up on the Mesa. But to take a small piece of property with a steep hill down to the hospital and turn that into a very intense residential area is just crazy. Why would anybody think of planning a city and do something like that? I'm shocked, I'm disappointed, and I hope that you can reconsider this idea. Somebody comes in with a development plan and, oh, there's money around. It's not about money. It's about keeping our city really beautiful and lovely and a great place to live.
Hi, I'm Carol Kerr. I own property at 102 Cottonwood, which is immediately across from this proposed development. So I understand tonight's decision is about the annexation of the property, but also about the option to write into the annexation a limit on the number of dwelling units. I think you should consider that carefully. I also understand that planning is a dynamic and ongoing process that already began in February with the concept. So that's why I ask you to address and discuss a couple of points that are actually related to the major impact review, but you should be thinking about during the annexation discussion. First, on the quote, "Use-appropriate and compatible" section of the review standards. The proposal states that the wide and improved Crestone Avenue, or County Road 160, will be further improved by curbs and sidewalks and attractive landscaping. And yet, in a different section, we learn that of the intent to expand the roadway to allow street parkway. to allow street parkway, street parking. I don't see how both are possible. There is no street parking anywhere else on Crestone. It is not compatible with the neighborhood. And on top of the discussions we've already heard about the shocking impact of this relatively high density, then we're going to put cars parked along that route, which is the route into the ranchways? It's totally incompatible. I urge the commission to closely consider the impact of parking for what we learned tonight. It could be as many as 15, 50 spaces if you don't constrain the allowed number of dwelling units. The second point made by the proposal under the environment review is that the wide nature of Crestone will allow for preservation of views and open space. Well, I take exception to that, and I think that everyone here would. That will allow for views to the west along the road, but it will seriously block the views that my neighbor has expressed so well are part of the character not only of the mesa but of Salida. It's currently available, that view, from the golf course all along Crestone, and it would not, it would be blocked unless you tonight or during the actual planned development take a very close look at that concern. And not surprisingly, since I live across the street, I urge no variance on the height restriction in the code, which would further accentuate the shock of this particular development. If you have moved along Crestone and see that, that line of low homes, you would see what a shock that would be. Thank you for your time, thanks for taking this so seriously.
Thank you.
Did I get that right?
This is the first time I ever had to do this. Good evening, I'm Anthony Aguero, I live at 412 Cottonwood. Thank you for your time this evening and consideration. I am here to voice my opposition to the Mesa Ridge annexation request. Based on the planning commission's mission to preserve Salida's historic small-time character, small-town character, it is my opinion that the Mesa Ridge application as currently submitted falls woefully short of that mission. New developments should complement the neighboring communities with, by mass and scale. The applicant has stated in his application that the lot sizes as proposed do comply. While that is true, the square footage is of similar mass and size, the width of these, of 40% of the lots is far smaller. Four of those lots are 27 and 1/2 feet, 26 feet, 27 and 1/2 feet, and 26 feet. I offer that these dimensions are not consistent, nor do they complement the existing neighborhood. Furthermore, until the applicant has finally decided on how many dwellings they're going to build, this annexation should be denied. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Matt Cefalou. I live at 414 Cottonwood Circle, directly across the street from this property. I'm going to speak both on annexation now and then again later on the major subdivision. One thing that I'm confused about is there seems to be a lot of discussion about annexation that's including information about the major subdivision. And when we bought our property in 2019, we were aware that this was going to be annexed eventually, and I am supportive of generally annexing this property. So from just a pure annexation standpoint, sure, annex it, it makes sense, it should, there should be houses built there. But with the annexation agreement having so much information about the major subdivision, it's generally confusing because as many of my neighbors have said, the proposed major subdivision having 11 to 14 units is inconsistent with all the other houses on Crestone. Drive down Crestone, those lots are 120 feet wide. There's one house, single-family home per 120 feet. You hit this lot, the very end, suddenly you're going to get 14 units squeezed in there, or 17, whatever the number is. So, particularly on the trail as well, since that is part of this conversation, although it probably should be part of the major subdivision, since it's more about what the dedication would be on the subdivision, not annexation, that trail will be fully in the shade in the winter. It's on the north side of a steep hill, which means it's going to just be covered in ice all winter. I don't know if any of you have ever been on any of those trails back there in the winter. Once it snows in the winter, it's ice, it's ice for the rest of the year until the spring. So even if it's connected, is the city going to keep it clean of ice for the year round? And then it, if the city just keeps that one section clean, it drops down to another section that's just ice. So it's not usable in the winter for like three to four months during the year. So the, the insertion of that trail while in the summer, I personally would use it. In the winter, it's going to be unusable, and I don't know if that goes into your consideration here as well. So just sort of to wrap up these particular comments, because I will have more, when we're talking about major subdivision, I don't know why there's language in this annexation that's specific to the subdivision, other than to say there's a maximum number of units. And if there is a maximum number of units stated, it should be far less than whatever number has been thrown out thus far, so that way this property is consistent with all the neighbors. Final comment before I go on this topic. With the number of units proposed, there is no other land next to this that can be developed. And so if this was a gateway to adding more high-density units next to this, sure, maybe it would make sense. But this is it, there is no other property to build this high of density units within, to continue to expand. So it's different than all the other developments like Two Rivers or whatever, whatever the one's called, off of Airport Road over by Angel View. Those have a lot of area to continue to build and expand these higher-density units. This one doesn't. It's that one single property, it's tiny. I don't know how you're going to get that many units in there without just completely destroying the character of that road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We built our home in 10, eight years ago in Crestone Mesa. It's a lovely neighborhood. What I have, I need clarification. If we say something in the annexation vote, and it's not in the, if we have to follow that, do we have to follow it in the subdivision report? If we pass, if the hearing is, if the vote is called for annexation and it has the wording that it does have now, will it have to be in the subdivision?
Will it have to be in subdivision? I think we'll, we'll write that down, and we can, maybe we can discuss that.
I think there is.
We'll take your comment.
There is duplication.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it? Okay.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Anybody else that didn't sign up? Did not sign up? Come on up.
Sorry, I never saw a sign-in sheet. My name's Christina Fraser. I'm at 858 Crestone Avenue, so three doors down from this development. I wanted to make sure that the city understands that I have not once received any communication from the city about this. The only way I knew about it is actually taking that trail down to the hospital trail, and I happened to see the notice on the street. So can somebody from the city work with me? I've owned that property for more than a year. I do not understand why I have not received any communication.
Notices get mailed out to folks within 175 feet of the subject property.
Which...
So if your lot falls beyond 175 feet, there would not have been a mailing that went to you specifically.
Okay.
And that's state statute for minimum mailing distance.
Thank you. I wanted to make a couple of points. I am, I agree with development, but reasonable development, what is being proposed, especially now that this number of 25 units has suddenly popped up, does not match the rest of the properties up there, and I'm very concerned about it. I'm also very concerned that we don't know what this development looks like, we just see 10 lots. And I'm extremely concerned that the way, the way I look at it is that all that parking from maybe 50 people is going to be on that street. And Crestone Avenue is extremely narrow. I watch big semi-trucks haul gravel and rocks up and down that street, dump trucks every day, 50 miles an hour. I don't know how you're going to have cars parked on that street and not create an extreme safety concern. So I would like the city to look at that, I would like the city to look at the density to see if that's even appropriate. I would like them to look at parking to make sure that it's on that property and not the street. Also, I agree with Councilman that I use those trails, there's three ways to access those hospital trails, two to the west of me, one to the east. I don't need another trail. I use the one, I think the city should use their, a better use of the city's time and resources to work with the hospital to get easement on the existing trail. And by the way, I'm a senior citizen, I ride and walk up that steep trail, it's not a problem. Okay? That's it. Thank you so much for your consideration. I hope that you will actually listen to the neighbors and their concerns, because you are going to otherwise very much destroy the way that the mesa looks for the rest of us. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody online? Thank you.
We do have people online, I'm trying to see if anyone wants to speak, please raise their hand, raise your hand if you're online to speak.
Can you give them a second?
Yeah, come on up.
Thank you, I'm Chair Ruth Markacy, 406 Cottonwood. I just want to say, think about if there's 25 units there, mom and dad have a car, right? Two cars are parked there. You've got to remember, we live in Cottonwood Greens, we have two disabled people that live there, you've got, I think, two or three young families with kids, maybe middle-school kid age or younger, and every one of us are older and we all got grandkids. And so help me, if anybody were to hit my grandson, you'd have a lawsuit on your hand. So just think about that. Thanks.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone online to speak?
I don't think so.
Last chance to raise your hand online if you would like to speak. It is a button at the bottom of your screen, we'll give you just a few seconds.
Okay. Okay, if there's nobody, they can, they'll have other opportunity. So that with that, we'll close, close the public comment, and I have a request for a quick break. So we'll adjourn for just a couple of minutes before we get into our discussion.
I had water yesterday.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
We would start with a couple of clarifications, maybe try and answer a couple of the questions that came up. And I think staff is probably best suited to do that. And I think, you know.
Sure.
Would you take that?
Yeah, no problem. Just a few points of clarification for the public and for the planning commission. It was noted that the street frontage, lot frontage of each of the lots went down to 27 and a half feet. That's actually on the plat. That's the developable area, taking into account the setbacks, the internal dotted lines. The minimum lot frontage for any of the lots is actually 37 and a half feet, which is, corresponds to code. That is the minimum lot frontage for R2 zone as proposed. The next thing that came up, I believe somebody said something along the lines of street parking not being allowed or not done on Crestone Ave. And to the best of staff's knowledge, that is not the case. That it is allowed, actually. Public parking can be done along the frontages of Crestone Road and CR 160, just as it is allowed in most, if not all, of our other city streets. In this case, Crestone is 65 feet wide. Your typical local street throughout the rest of town is actually 60 feet. And then lastly, to the question of whether or not something that is in the annexation agreement or part of the conditions of the annexation would need to be followed as part of the subdivision, that is absolutely the case unless they, the developer came back and asked for an amendment to the annexation, which would go through its own process in front of city council. The reason that we are proposing as many conditions as part of this annexation agreement is primarily because there is not a specific development plan shown and applied for via this process at this time. We're looking at simply the subdivision plats, in which case a lot of different possibilities could come out of it. Yet our code specifically, when it comes to inclusionary housing and parks and open space, really contemplates specificity. We don't require it as, as an application, but those particular pieces of the code do. And therefore, that's, that's why we're trying to get ahead of the game here, if we will. Because if you don't stipulate those conditions now, you may never have an opportunity to do it beyond what the code says as part of the subdivision. So I hope that helps to clarify some things.
May I ask a question?
No, no, no. I'm sorry, you may not. We are, we've closed public input. You'll have further, we're going to be coming back. So we're going to just be discussing the annexation at this point. So thank you.
I, I could also make one other comment about the parking, and that is that when these lots do come in for development, building permit, they would have to provide their required parking on site.
On site, yes.
That's as required by code as standard.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a comment about the parking. Yes, it's legal to park there, but on Crestone Mesa, there's no need to park on that avenue. And the, the most similar development is Crestone Mesa. And the lot sizes are similar, I believe, to the lot sizes here. And if you drive into Crestone Mesa, there are lots of cars parked on the street. So I suspect that there will be a lot of cars parked on the street here. I don't know how can I avoid it. I mean, there are a lot of cars in this city.
Anybody else want to chime in?
I'd like to talk about a couple of things. So there's really two conditions, the inclusionary housing and the easement for the park. And appears to be different opinions as to the need for a trail. And furthermore, we keep asking our Parks Director to provide a comprehensive trail plan for us so that we can use that information to make these kinds of informed decisions. So I'm concerned about the need for this trail, the location for the trail, and the privacy for the neighboring community. Because I haven't heard anything about setbacks or anything else associated with trail in this particular area. And it is a defined area. So I'm concerned about that language that, relative to that easement for this property.
I guess I would ask staff, one of the, the public commenters made the point that this trail would basically come up against their property line and be very close to their house. Is it, was that a correct statement? That this trail would, as laid out, come up to her property line?
That is correct. It goes right up to the edge of that last lot.
And is there a grade, a significant grade difference, as they had mentioned?
There is. The, the straight portion of the green going back to the area where it starts to curve is relatively flat. But from there below, and I, it's a little difficult to see. I think you all up on the dais might be able to see the topographic lines. I can certainly come up and, oh, there we go. So you can see where the topography really starts, right in that area of lot, the second to last lot there on the east side.
A comment was made that this would have, this trail would have a lesser grade than the existing hospital trail. Does anyone know the grade, the difference between the two maximum grades?
I do not know the grade of the hospital trail. We do have the engineer for this project online who might be able to speak to that. Bill, would you like to weigh in on that if you're there?
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hello, Bill Hussey here. This trail's designed at a 10% maximum grade. I don't have a measurement on the hospital trail. I suspect there's a section that's about 50 feet long that's in the 15 to 20% range.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
He suspects.
Okay. I think it is, I, I walk that trail frequently and I would suspect it is greater than 10%. But the comment that was made about ice, I mean, there's ice on the hospital trail and, you know, anybody who does a lot of walking knows that's north facing trails have ice on them for a significant part of the year.
So I understand, if I understand correctly, that the additions to the annexation agreement that are, have been added, the inclusionary housing and then the, the trail easement, right? Hang on, I'm just going to make sure. Yeah, so those are the two things that have been added, right? The inclusionary housing and the trail.
Yeah, specifics to it. Both of them were already covered in the original staff report.
And it, it's unusual, I think, for us to contemplate a trail in the, in the annexation agreement. I mean, I get that the city wants to protect its interest in that, but I kind of feel like if that's the case, it should come into the subdivision or the major impact when we have more information about what exactly is going to be built and, and where. As far as the inclusionary housing, I think it's fine to put that in there because we've seen some issues with properties, you know, for sale properties not being able to be sold right away because of qualifications of the inclusionary buyer and allowing the applicant or the nonprofit to rent them in the meantime makes sense to me. So I would probably be in favor of taking the trail issues, number four, the, well, let me just go back and just ask staff another question. It's not just the trail, it's the, the calculation of the open space. So that would also be part of the subdivision agreement typically, isn't that correct?
Yeah, so the, the part of the challenge is, again, there's no development fully proposed and applied for in this case. The code, as you all know, has a specific calculation around the maximum number of units that could potentially be built on the lot. That's what you're supposed to take when there is no development. However, the applicant in this case, at time of annexation, has provided concepts and a range of number of units. And so that is what, the annexation is what allows us to contemplate what the requirement would be outside of utilizing that maximum calculation.
So let me ask a follow-up then. If we were to take number four out completely, the open space and the calculation, but we were to add a limit to the number of, a maximum number of units to be built, that would follow the annexation along regardless of who the applicant might be, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And then the calculation based on that could be determined in the subdivision agreement and/or the major impact review? Is that, am I understanding it correctly?
Again, if we, if we waited until the subdivision to apply the requirement, the open space requirement, we'd be having to use that 0.02 times the number of, maximum number of units calculation.
Sure.
As it. And since there's already been discussion with staff, between the Parks Director and the applicant about the requirements, it was deemed to make the most sense to put this into the annexation based off of those conceived numbers, the 11 to 17 range, so that the applicant is not responsible for an amount of open space that they have no intention on providing, or, sorry, amount of units that they have no intention on doing.
Sure, but if we limited the number of units and took the calculation out and moved it to the next subject that we're about to hear tonight, or, because we're going to do the, the zoning and then we're going to do the major impact, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So this could fall into the major impact, is that correct?
It could, but you.
I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to wrestle with is the whole idea of the trail, the space, who takes care of the land, the erosion on the slope. I mean, would it be better to have the applicant just pay a fee in lieu for all of the open space requirement? And as Giff said originally, you know, let the city parks and rec have the money to do whatever they want with it? Or is it really so important that we solve this trail situation in this annexation?
I also think the legal trigger for land dedication, cash and lieu is typically the subdivision.
Right.
I think we could get the city attorney to confirm, but I, I believe like there, there wouldn't be anything owed if no units were developed.
Right.
If there was only an annexation.
If, correct, if you're not, if we're annexing it in without a subdivision, right? You can still, annexations are still negotiated agreements. So the city can require more or less whatever it wants when it comes to annexation as a, as a condition of the annexation. And so.
And the city has required the trail as a condition of the annexation?
That is, that is correct.
Is that correct?
The Parks, Parks and Open Space Director has required that the trail be built out. And so we had the conversation about the trail versus fees at one point. And the director stated that the trail is what is preferred because of its location, its proximity to the, the rest of the city that's already developed, its proximity to both the CR 160 trail that's in existence and the proposed future or intended future north-south connector between CR 160 and.
So it's required because it's preferred? Is that right?
It seems like the SPOT chairwoman came to the mic and explained.
Please, we're having a discussion.
Came to the mic and explained the process and showed the map. It wasn't like there was no thought put behind it. And I get it, we, we have some flexibility here, but our Parks and Rec Director is also saying this fits with the vision of the city. I mean, I just want to kind of get that.
My only concern is why is it in the annexation agreement? That's my biggest concern. Not whether we need a trail or whether SPOT, you know, has done the research and the city wants it, but whether should it be in an annexation agreement?
I would like to make the comment that the only people in the city that can require anything are the council members. So right now, we have a desire on the part of the Parks and Rec. We do not have a requirement for anything. What you are asking for is for us to agree with that requirement and tell the city council, we think that should be required.
Right, right.
I, I agree with Giff. I, I think this should be limited to the inclusionary housing requirement. I, I like the A and B there.
I do too.
That's about it.
I do too.
I think the rest.
And we could take it up at the subdivision whenever that happens, right?
Right, when there's more detail and you can deal with privacy and setback and other issues. Would be my opinion.
That would be in way.
I think though, what I heard Bill say a moment ago, just to, you know, point this out, is that we might lose the opportunity to request this at subdivision, that there is a point of leverage right now in which we can request something that is above and beyond what the straight calculation might say at subdivision.
Yes, we always have to imagine that you're dealing with one application at a time. And, I mean, technically, if the annexation were to go through, but the subdivision weren't to go through, then you're back at square one when somebody comes back for it. And.
And you're renegotiating it at that time.
Yeah. And, and the preference of the Parks Director is to get the, the trail built quickly, you know.
And the cash and lieu could be significantly less the amount, than the amount of money it takes to build the trail.
Yes, absolutely.
So there's a trade-off.
Yeah, yeah. That's a big consideration, for sure.
Okay.
Do we have any numbers on that? I mean, is it really? Because they've calculated, calculated the additional fee in lieu based on the number of units.
Well, and the other thing is the timing of it, because you don't receive, generally you don't receive the fees. If you don't know the number of units being built, you don't receive the fees upfront. They come in at time of building permit.
Right.
Currently, they're $7,500 per unit.
Right.
For the open space fees.
Right.
I don't have a estimate, perhaps the applicant or his engineer has an app, has an estimate of the cost of this, but knowing the cost of building some other trails that we've done fairly recently, I would assume it's going to be more than what we would collect in fees and lieu. And we wouldn't get that money until years down the line after the units have been built.
I don't, I just don't like having something that's specific in the annexation agreement, personally. But I would like to limit the number of units, dwellings, to a, to a number certain. You know, if it's 17 maximum, let's just say we're limiting it to 17 maximum. Somebody doesn't come in and later on, if this one doesn't work and built 25.
It is a maximum. It is a maximum listed in number four on page six, but the rest of it is, of that, number four is related to the calculations for open...
Well, they say it anticipates that. It doesn't say that it's limited to that. Right?
I mean, I'd be satisfied with limiting it to 17. I, I think it's a compromise where they could otherwise go more.
Right. Could I, would it be possible to ask the applicant a couple of questions at this point?
Sure, yeah.
So, hi. A long run for all of us, I know. So you've said 11, maybe 17. What are you anticipating? I mean, are you, I know we haven't zoned it yet, but assuming you get your desired zone, how would you get from 11 to 17?
I don't know if we can pull the plat up here. So if you take the...
Go point, maybe.
Yeah.
Take the mic.
It's a fashion game show host over here.
Right.
If you look at these lots, these are roughly 50 feet wide, and these are 37 and a half feet wide. This lot is 75 feet wide, but chokes down at the back here and to deal with...
For people listening, we're pointing at lot one.
I'm sorry?
That's lot one.
Lot one, yeah, all the way over to lot 10. You know, we are considering putting duplexes on these five lots here, single-family homes on these, there would be, you know, our vision is a little bit smaller footprints here. But all we're asking for is some flexibility because we're not going to build all five of these at once. So we might, we might build two and then decide that it makes more sense to build some single-family or vice versa. And so that's where that, you know, because we're not, this isn't a PD, we're not defining, we're applying under the major subdivision based on the requirements for, you know, if we get there, the R2 zoning. That's how we would get between 11 and 17. Now, the 17th unit would be potentially an additional inclusionary housing unit. That's our hope is to provide three of those, but there's, you know, we haven't designed those yet. So, you know, we're very confident we can get two, we'd like to find a way to put three on there. And that's, you know, so, and, and in terms of the open space fees, you know, we had had a conversation with Diesel. We're okay paying the open space for 11 units that we know we're, we know we're going to have, assuming this gets approved, we're committed at a minimum 11 units. And so we're okay paying those 11-unit open space fee at plat. It's just the additional few units that we're uncertain about, that we have asked to pay the open space fees, whatever they are at time of building permit. You know, a year from now, two years from now, if we decide we do do duplexes, we'll, we'll add those in or single-family.
So how, how, can you speak to the cost of the trail versus the fees?
Bill, are you online?
Yeah.
Did you run, I believe you emailed me those numbers today?
Yeah, as currently designed, I have it at 84,000 to build the trail.
And, yeah, and the fees went up this year from 5,000 to 7,500, so it's, it's...
84,000 to build the trail, or, I'm not sure, I understood what the...
Well, it's 84,000 to build the trail, that doesn't account for the land, the value of the land as well, but...
Right, so if you were not to build the trail and you were to pay the fee for the open space, period, what would that number be?
11 by...
Eighty-two thousand, five hundred...
So roughly the same amount.
Yeah.
But not accounting for the cost of the land.
Correct, correct.
Right. Right.
Any more questions while I'm up here?
Can you do your math? I don't see how you get to 17, I just want to understand that, because I count 15, but...
Two, four, six, eight...
Two on 10 also.
Two on 10, yeah.
And two on one.
11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17.
Oh, if it's a, if it's a three...
If we can do a third inclusionary housing unit.
Thanks, Kenny.
So back to, thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions for him?
No.
So back to you, Bill. So if we were to take out number four and push it down the road, giving everybody a chance to figure out what really the right way to do it is, I mean, can't we still come back and recapture that? Because we would be taking out any calculation for open space until the subdivision agreement came in, right?
Yeah.
Because we would just be doing an annexation and we would just be doing a zoning and then the major impact, and then they would come back to us with a subdivision showing what's going to be built where and how. And it seems to me that that would be the right place to have the trail discussion.
Yeah, if, if that's the way that you all would like to do that, it's certainly feasible to do it that way and to, to word it that way. I think the, the challenge, I wish we had legal online, we don't in this particular case, but the, under the subdivision, we have to, we have to follow the code, because this is not a PD, it's not a variance, it's not negotiated.
Right.
And without a specific development plan, it makes it challenging. However, if the annexation agreement does set a maximum, like you're saying, let's, let's just for sake of conversation, say it was at 17, then we could utilize that language within the confines of the subdivision decision and recommendations to base things off of a maximum of up to 17, for the purpose of the conversation around the trail.
So let me, let me dig in a little bit more. I'm sorry.
No, go for it.
I know you're tired and hungry. If we did have a maximum, could we put something then to protect the city into the annexation that simply said something like the, the trail requirement possibility to be determined at subdivision? I mean, could, could we...
I just don't know that it would hold any weight.
Well, it'd be in the annexation.
Well, to be determined.
Right.
Which, which of course it is.
Well, the, well, but I mean, the...
What you're really saying is the open space consideration would be based on a maximum of 17.
Of 17, but...
To solve that problem.
Yeah, well, let's be careful, because I don't know how soon they plan to come in with a subdivision plan, but we may be under a new land use code at this time.
That's true.
So what is it, 12 and a half percent of 2.3 acres?
Ah.
Is that, is that...
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we have the subdivision in front of us this evening, but if it were for some reason rescinded or pulled and did not come back in until the new land use code came forth, then we are under new code language, new requirements.
I gotta say, I, I feel like, Staff, you've talked to the developer, right? This is, as you said, a negotiated agreement that has been agreed to, and it seems like it's meeting a need for the city.
Mm-hmm.
Like, I guess I, I'm struggling to, I don't want to be unfair to anybody, but it seems like if we, based on the 11 to 17 units, this kind of fits a need and it meets their requirement, like, you know?
So, okay, so could the trail situation be changed from what we're seeing tonight in the subdivision if we were to approve this like it is? I mean, does it, is it locked in stone, that it has to be exactly where it is and exactly...
Well, I mean, of course, it's just a recommendation at this time from planning commission, so it could change between now and council.
Right. But if it's passed by council...
Yeah, if it's pa, I mean, if it's passed and, and other information comes to light or whatever it may be, then if it's a minor change, it's something that could be addressed administratively. If it was a major change, like not building the trail or something along those lines, then that would probably require coming back for a full-on plat amendment that would go in front of you all again.
I guess maybe I have a follow-up question here along, I think, what you were asking, Francie. Say we approve this as it is now, so it's built into the annexation agreement, what can we change in the subdivision process? Like, I guess kind of getting to...
Like, can we create a bigger buffer? Can we, you know, I mean, I, I guess that would be up to the applicant because he's saying that, that he's going to change the boundary of the...
It's all in the language of the conditions. That's why these specific recommendations are so important to get right or to leave enough space so that the specifics can be addressed within the subdivision conditions themselves.
Okay.
This is what makes our job so much fun.
Yeah.
I did want to actually say one more thing. I, I think the developer said .2 acres, acres per unit, right, is required?
.02.
.02, yeah, sorry, that's an order of magnitude, we should get that right. So that seems like it would be equivalent to 14 units of credit.
Correct, the, the .28 would equate to 14 units.
And then if it went up to 15, 16, 17 units, fee in lieu.
Fee in lieu.
Right.
That language could be put in there, that's not how it's currently written, just as an FYI.
Okay, so why isn't it written that way?
Um, I think it was primarily to just, it is really a administrative simplification so that regardless, whatever is being provided for the trail meets the open space requirement for the minimum number that they're providing, that, that they're proposing, right, in the concept with the 11. And so that beyond that, it would just be the fee in lieu for anything above that. So...
I mean, I get all that, but they're essentially providing more than is needed.
They are, yep.
Yeah, they would be, right.
Just want to make sure we agree.
There's no arguing with that.
So is there any flexibility in the subdivision to have a trail moved or changed based on our, this drawing? I mean, is that the way it's going to be?
For the subdivision being considered tonight?
No, no, for down the road.
Down the road, yeah, yeah. I mean, again, if it's a, if it's a large change, it would need to come back to you all as far as a, like a plat amendment. If it was a minor thing, that could be done administratively. If it moved just a few feet but doesn't substantially affect any lots or the number of lots...
Well, I don't see how it could move any and not affect a lot, because it's right up against a lot. It's right up against the neighbor's lot and the proposed lot.
I don't think that the conditions explicitly say that the location is to remain where it is. It just outlines the estimated dedicated area.
Okay.
It will, construction trail area, and that, that equates right now to .28, which will satisfy a lot.
The size of the trail.
It's, it's more about the size.
It does dedicate the width of it, correct?
Yeah, it does, 10 feet.
Yeah, 12, 12 feet. I've heard 10, 12.
Well, it's 10 on the map.
10 on the top, 12 on the bottom.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
Why is it 10 on the top and 12 on the bottom?
It's 10 across the, the lot in question that's being annexed, and then it's 12 on the portion of the hospital property, just to include a little bit of area around the trail for the construction and easement, access easement.
At the connection, yeah.
Again, seeing, we don't have any agreement, the city has no agreement with the hospital, correct?
Correct.
So again, I see, if they can get an agreement for what they want to do, they could get an agreement for a, a trail extension which might be 40 feet long instead of, you know, and would save a lot of money. And so people have to pedal slash walk three-tenths of a mile farther, you know? I, I don't see the problem. I mean, there's a solution there, it exists, if Ukraine and Russia, i.e. the city and the hospital, can get together and, and, and work it out, which they have to work out anyway.
Can we point out that this other trail, and I guess I would object to, a quarter mile is, is not insignificant to some people.
Well, if you're coming from the other direction, this is a quarter mile longer.
Okay, I mean...
And, and how long is, how long is this proposed trail?
It's like 160 feet or something.
I think the proposed length of the trail right now is 640 feet.
640 feet, okay, so the difference is about a tenth of, a little over a tenth of a mile.
I'd like to compare what trail we're talking about versus whatever.
So, okay, so the, the subject property is here.
Get the microphone, Bill.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're like wink marketing nail. All right, so the, the subject property is...
Punching.
...being around a bunch. Okay, right here. Again, the proposed trail is along the eastern edge of it and then contouring around the backside of the property, meeting up with the hospital trail, which there is public access onto here.
Oop. Okay.
Right in this general vicinity up here. Could you pan back out? The pro, the, the trail that Giff is talking about is, there's, so the hospital trail splits in, right around this area and continues out this way, but there is this other connection that goes up to the mesa right here, where there is no current technically public access on the hospital trail.
There's a bench there at the top.
The bench is a little ways down.
Oh, further down.
And I think the actual connection, I think it, it parallels the CR-160 here and then it meets up like somewhere right in here, there's a gap in the fence. So...
Correct.
That distance, whatever that is, I think the distance between the proposed trail access right here and Angler Trail is .46 miles, I know that number. So this is probably, you're right, around .3 or so.
I walked it yesterday.
Can you confirm though, that's not a public trail? Or is it a public trail? It is not a public trail. That was built, Donna might still be here, 2018, right? And, and that was not a, done through any process with the city. I'm unaware of any easements that were put across it whatsoever.
You're talking about the trail that's existing now.
Yes, correct, correct. This is a public trail, the Angler Trail, that comes down here and wraps down eventually to Franz Lake, so. Yeah, the, the concept, again, you heard me say it, Director Post is interested in a connection, since there will be a trail eventually between Poncha on the west side of the golf course to Crestone Ave, so that there would be an easy connection for folks coming off of that trail to be able to get down to the hospital trail and to other trail areas to the north, instead of having to deviate down to either of these trails here. But this is the only public one that we are aware of currently. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. I do think there's a, I don't know, privacy or whatnot, it's really the only trails, even the one by the golf course in the system, that kind of go through, potentially go through a neighborhood.
Yeah.
So it would be helpful to maybe think about where you do talk about design, if it's not an annexation, if it's in subdivision, to think about how it's appropriately sited in design, kind of fit the character.
Yep.
I like trails, I like connectivity, I think that's...
I do too.
I respect Diesel's recommendation, but I can appreciate not wanting a trail like right through my side yards.
Right.
Seems like there's a way to...
Yeah, I just wish there was more, that, that we had more flexibility to protect the idea that Park wants, that, you know, a connectivity, a trail, but, you know, it seems like with this language, we're locking it in exactly where it is, and I'm not sure I'm all that comfortable with that, that, that it being in that place.
You can say that.
So...
Just to clarify, I don't believe there's any language that specifically within the annexation conditions that lock it into the specific location.
When would it then be redesigned and changed if we were to want to do that?
So in the subdivision plat, you, in that process, you could recommend a change to the location.
In the subdivision?
In the subdivision.
Okay, so we could leave this in, in here, kick the can down the road for load, for redesign and hope that the city and the neighbors and the developer can put their heads together and the hospital and figure out the best way forward so that everyone gets a little bit of what they need.
Yeah. Generally speaking, I believe it's state, it talks of a connection between CR-160... Generally speaking, I believe it's state, it talks of a connection between CR 160.
Oh, right.
And then you can secure it now.
Secure it now. Right, 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 yeah.
Yeah, hold on.
We've spent a lot of time designing this thing.
Yeah.
We went through a lot of options to put that trail in different locations.
Yeah.
Diesel was also really adamant that it needed to be on that boundary to capture enough slope to drop down. Now, with that said, we're very, we're like, we're not, we don't have a preference if the trail's there or not. And if it's not, you know, our, our preference would be to simply move forward. Lot 10 would become a little wider and, you know, the sub.
Trail might be on lot one?
No, the trail, we wouldn't be able to put the trail. We would pay the fees.
Right.
You know, so I just want to extend that option and. But we can't, we, the idea of moving that trail is, is pretty.
Not practical.
There's nowhere to go.
Okay. So we're back to taking four out. What do you think? Take it out?
Yeah, can come back later.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion. Wow, we've been here for over two hours. I can still speak. I got, we got two more to go. I hereby make a motion to recommend a city council approve the proposed Mesa Ridge annexation as it meets the findings of fact for annexations subject to staff recommended conditions, with the additional condition of limiting the number, the total number of units to seven dwelling units to 17.
Are you going to strike number four?
Well, I thought we said we're going to leave it in, yeah?
No, I thought we just.
Okay, I, I.
Further discussion.
Further, I'm going to pull the motion for a moment while we clarify what we're really wanting to do.
You're taking four. I thought you were just, I thought you were going to strike that.
Well, we need to come to a conclusion on that. Do we strike it and go forward and have him pay the fee? Excuse me?
No.
I think if we, if we strike it, we have another bite at the apple.
I think so too.
Yeah.
Strike it.
It can, it can come back, but like he has, then the option, we can get through the annexation.
Right.
He can have the option for figuring that later.
And Diesel can figure out, okay. All right, well, let's go back then. I hereby make a motion to recommend city council approve the proposed Mesa Ridge annexation as it meets the findings of fact for annexations subject to staff recommended conditions, minus condition number four regarding the conceptual development of the open space and trail, striking that, and adding a condition to limit the total number of units to, to a total of 17 dwelling units.
And principal units?
Principal units?
Principal dwelling units.
Principal, let me get this, 17 principal dwelling units.
Why would I say it that way?
Versus 80Us.
Yeah.
But that would add another, more, I'm not going to add that.
Okay.
I'm going to say units.
Okay.
Dwelling units.
So inclusive of all residential units?
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Do I have a second or are we dead?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the annexation with the requirements as Commissioner Francie Boomer has stated. Further discussion? Can I clarify on, do we need to state principal or?
No.
I think, I think just for transparency, the intent, because as you all know, one ADU is allowed per lot, and that doesn't factor into how we calculate the rest of this. So if the intent is to cut it at a specific number of total residential units, I think that that needs to be very clear.
You're saying an ADU as a residential unit? So that, so it would count as one of the 17?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we just need to be very clear that if the intent is to say that it is 17 total units, that, that could come in a variety of ways, 14 primaries, and then there's three ADUs that are allowed throughout the subdivision over time? Or are we saying that 17 primary and then each of those lots could have one ADU?
My motion, I think, was very clear, 17 residential units.
Which is inclusive of all.
Inclusive of all residential units. Counselor can object or, or throw it out, but that's my motion.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion?
That takes care of the overage that you pointed out, Dan, right? If we're getting rid of four altogether.
Right. Yep.
Okay, I think we're ready.
Let.
Yes.
Boomer.
Yes.
Crebel.
No.
Colby.
Yes.
Derrington.
Yes.
Bush.
No.
No Leighton, no Walsh. Riggs.
I'm alternate, I'm not voting.
That was it.
Send it to council.
Okay, motion passes recommendation to council. Is one another quick break or do you want to keep moving?
I'm okay now.
Okay.
Need another one in a bit. Zoning.
All right, so we will go ahead and move on to the recommendation on proposed zoning.
Would you, point of order real quick, Chairman?
Yes.
Do you want one of the alternates to vote in this? Oh, actually, it's Riggs because we have.
Got five.
Yeah, we've got five.
Five, okay, okay.
Six, we've got six. Yeah, we have six.
All right, thank you, everyone. So this next discussion is on the recommendation on proposed 7305 County Road 160 Mesa Ridge zoning. And just as a point of clarification, this staff report is unchanged since the one that was originally sent out and published. So the request, the applicant team, same applicant team, High Desert Development, represented by Kenny Leighton, has requested R2 medium density residential zoning district for the annexation we just discussed. Next slide is showing a little bit of property information. This snip is taken from the future land use map. The proposed zoning conforms with the city's future land use map, which calls for either variable or higher efficiency residential neighborhoods, zone districts, which relates to our current R3 and R2 zoning. Next slide shows a little bit of the zoning map. So surrounding properties within city limits include C1, commercial to the north with a planned development overlay on top of the whole hospital property. And then R2 medium density residential to the south, southeast and east, and even further to the east, we have even some R3 high density residential areas. Review standards, the review standards for this zoning are consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed major subdivision plat does indicate provision of local trail dedication, trail dedication and connection. And zoning of R2 medium density residential would be consistent with the zoning found in the adjacent properties and would continue the regular pattern of development in the area. That's it for the zoning part of the presentation. I'm happy to take any questions for staff at this time.
Questions? Okay. Onto the applicant. Want to talk to that, Kenny?
Carolyn, have those slides labeled zoning?
The same one? No. Major sub? No, zoning.
Zoning. You all just saw this, I believe. Yep. Keep going. Okay, so obviously we're not going to do that with 17 units, but this is not our request, but I did want to point this out for context. If we requested R3, which is being requested on the Mesa in many different areas, this is what we could do. R2, next. This is a conceptual that we've, we're working on, and, you know, we believe it fits well within the existing zoning of all the surrounding properties on this parcel. Key change, I believe, is that, you know, the current max height is 35 feet in R2. The new land use code is going to go down to 28 feet. And, I mean, yeah, if you have any questions about anything else there, I'm happy to answer them. If you go to the potential streetscape, you can see, we provided this to show you, it's, it's a fairly long street frontage, and so it can be hard to visualize what 17 units could look like. This is, you know, the, the first lot kind of bends around, so it's not included in this diagram, but this is nine of the 10 lots, showing you kind of our max use and our minimum use, proposed plan for the neighborhood.
Just explain really quickly the difference between the top and the bottom?
On the top is showing.
All single family, and then that's with some duplexes.
The top has five duplexes.
Okay.
Yep. You know, we're excited about this plan. It's, it's, they're more modest in size than some of the homes in the area. And so we kind of have two ends of the spectrum that I feel like we could have sought here. And, you know, this is, you know, we're, yeah, we're, we're excited about the potential here and some of the, the different types of homes we could do within those parameters that we're proposing, so.
What's the approximate square feet of the single family and?
Those shown are between 1,600 and about 2,000 square feet.
And looks like parking, little garages in front?
Yep, parking has single car garages in front. Homes are far enough that you can tandem park two cars on the lot. Most of them will have shared, actually, all of these would have shared driveways, even the single family, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to public comment. I guess I'll just call the names again. If you want to come up and continue, you're welcome to. Paul Jensen?
I'll wait to speak.
Okay, okay. Wendy?
Everything's been so technical. I'm going to dumb it down a little bit. This is a committee I'm not smart enough to be on. And so I'm Wendy Rombold. I live at 104 Cottonwood Circle. I appreciate Mr. Crebel's comments about the trails, that they're fine the way they are, and the back of this lot is really steep and only the 50 deer that can scramble up the hill every day need to be there and not looking at the, budding up next to the Groover's house. Anyhow, I didn't want to start there, but, and now I'm off track. I do have a solution to the trail, trail and parks and fee and lieu problem, and that is I'm proposing R1 and develop, why, why doesn't the developer, who I don't mean to offend, build a minor subdivision instead of a major one? So, I know that the city staff and planners care about the aesthetics and structural integrity of the growth in our neighborhoods and town. We've just seen this demonstrated with the millions spent on the beautification of three new intersections downtown. So with the annexation of this parcel into the city, I feel R1 is more appropriate, the appropriate designation and density plan for the continuity of single family residences heading west along Crestone and County Road 160. Currently, there are 14 houses on this stretch of the Mesa. All but one are single level, and the lot sizes range from over an acre to point three zero acres at the minimum. The natural development and progression along this road should be a continuation of larger lots to preserve the character of the street and the views and night skies enjoyed by all. And I'm sorry, but I'm going to say this. Quite frankly, a cluster of homes in this location would look ridiculous, nonsensical and out of place. At this moment in Salida alone, we have a nine and a half month supply of multifamily units on the market. Also, R2 and R3 subdivisions are popping up like the weeds in my yard and include the likes of Two Rivers North and South, River Ridge, Confluence, Cleora, Flower Mill, South Ark, Granzilla, the 5H LLC Mesa Lane and Third Street by Donny Case, Spruce Street, The Dreamers and Doers on Oak, Salida Crossings, Jane's Place, Spaces to Create. There are three miles along Highway 50 that people would like to have developed. And then not to mention, in Poncha, we have Poncha Meadows and Tail Winds. So there is no need to have another, another R2 subdivision on this small Crestone parcel. A developer could, can be very well off financially and successful building four or five single level spec homes on that location. So I guess my time's up. So thank you very much for listening.
Loretta Grover, would you like to come back up?
So, thank you for another opportunity, just to let you know a few things. I agree with Wendy, wholeheartedly. My house is not two stories. I'll be on the east side. When we built our ADU, no one from the county, no one from the city, no one from the trail said, hey, rethink thoughtfully where to put your ADU. You know, if, we're going to build this big trail and there's likely going to be this big subdivision next door. We had no, no warnings, no thoughtful, professional dialogue. And she's right, we're one story. Most of the houses, including mine, going east on Crestone are one story. Even the ones at the very end that are duplexes are very, very well designed and attractive. The only two stories that stand out, or I call two stories, and I know I'm not talking the feet and height and all that stuff, are right there when Mesa Lane meets Crestone. Well, they, they used to be the Habitat Homes, duplex duplex, and then duplex duplex set back in. We need to do what's best for more people, more animals, not just the profit of the people that take a risk and buy some land. I really agree that R1 is more appropriate. Make your lots bigger, build your houses more wealthy, more attractive, whatever you want to do to appeal to people that are the millionaires. But we don't have to sacrifice the quality of life and the quality of, for wildlife in that little teeny, small space on the Mesa. R1 can make a lot of people happy, the people that buy it, the people that make money off of it, and the people that already live there. It doesn't have to be so congested in such a small parcel that puts us all at risk. We're very concerned about that, the back of that land going down the hill because it's already going down the hill now. And I've walked on that dump. I've walked over the trash. I knew the couple that had it before Nathan Young bought it. I've walked over, we have walked over the dump, seen all the trash coming up, all rusted and so forth. There's so many risks of putting two tenths of subdivision right there, and you'll, you'll have less risk if you consider what could be offered to the public for R1 instead of R2. Thank you.
Dewey?
Yes, thank you. I guess I would start with a question because I'm confused. Y'all just had a. Y'all just had a vote that you could get 17 units in there, correct?
The maximum.
Yes.
Okay. That could only be if it's R2. Is that not correct?
No.
If it's not R2, can he have 17 units in there?
Well, that's, we'll determine that as we go, for sure.
It's not part of-
That's not really the discussion here.
If it's R1, he, they can still put 17 units there?
I think so. Could you get-
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'll do the math right now, real quick.
Are you sure?
He's going to do the math.
I can be ridiculous.
The code, the code would, the code would dictate.
Hmm?
The code would dictate. If it changed, we would, that would have to change, yes.
So, you already decided on the R2 by your previous vote?
So, not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Yes, more than 17 could actually go in, even if it was on R1. Not, not subdivided, but-
Right.
As one lot.
But not, not, it is-
I'm sorry, it's, uh, multifamily.
3125.
No, but the multifamily, because you'd have to do multifamily, sorry. It's not the easiest question in the world. Um, are we even allowed R1 as just the single family?
Single family.
Yeah, so, no, so, uh, you would have to have minimum of 50-foot of frontage. It's approximately 450 feet of frontage, so technically you could get nine lots, um-
Which could have duplexes on them?
Which, well, in the-
An ADU is not R1.
Not in the current, not in the current code, but they could have ADUs. So technically, you could have 18 units.
Right.
Yeah, but you're speaking to ADUs, so you're just, you know, that's not fair.
Nine principal.
So what I, my question will go back. If it's only nine, and you already had a previous vote to go forward with 17, you've already, this whole R2 discussion has already been decided, correct?
It has not, sir.
Nope.
We're going to decide it after we hear all the public comment. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm not done.
You have a minute.
The number of units that you're cramming in there, it's not even just the character. It's going to make it overcrowded in that area. Across the street from this, uh, proposed subdivision, there's one exit in and one exit out. And the next little development has two exits in and two exits out. This subdivision is just a free-for-all. They can pour out and in as they please, which is going to interfere with the traffic patterns greatly there. I'm done.
Mary Ann Hauser?
Ah. I don't know if this is useful, but my property abuts the proposed development, and I'm R1, so just thought I'd share that. And what I heard everybody say is they were so concerned about the character of, of the Mesa. But when you deliberated, I'm not sure I heard that factored in. I heard more numbers, I heard about the trail. What about everybody's thoughts about, this doesn't fit? Just curious.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think you know how I feel.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll pass.
Carol Kerr?
Nothing more, thank you.
Anthony Agaro?
No, thank you.
Matt Sefalu?
Is, uh, so I'm Matt Sefalu, 414 Cottonwood Circle, across the street from the site. Uh, is this also a negotiation, as you were talking about the annexations, like a little bit of a negotiation? Uh, because I think what he said about having shared driveways, if R2 does get approved, from my perspective, those shared driveways are like necessary to avoid, you know, too many cars backing in and out. So I don't know if the R2 zoning also can have language around, if it is zoned R2, that there has to be this shared driveway aspect to it. Um, yeah, so that's just, uh, I don't, I don't know if it's, if that's part of the zoning or not.
No, I don't think, there might be, there's probably something in the-
There's codes, uh, Public Works has their, um, their standards for entrance and exit onto collector's streets, local streets, et cetera, and it was requested in one of the conceptual meetings that they all be shared driveways to-
Great.
Reduce the number of entrance and exits.
Yeah, that, that was great to hear, under the proposal. I mean, obviously, I would like to see fewer units, but under the structure, thank you.
Could, could I just clarify something, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
When, when we made our motion for the annexation, and we capped the number of residential units at 17, that was very specific to include ADUs. We also took out the language about the, the trail and open space configuration, so that can be worked out in the subdivision. And I'm not sure, when we made that motion, that that was clear to the public. So I just wanted to clarify that, for what that's worth. Okay.
Uh, Donella Rust?
I'll pass at this time.
Okay, Christina, was it?
Okay. Thank you.
And then who's last, Cherub?
Cherub.
Cherub?
Cherub.
Cherub?
Cherub.
I like it, though. It's pretty.
Um, Cherith Markhazy. We met as an HOA board last night, and I don't know what this means, but Mesa Ridge has, if you have 17 units, it has 7.48 per acre. Right, Rick?
Dwelling units. Dwelling units per acre.
Cottonwood Greens, where we're at, we have 44 homes, beautiful homes, by the way. There are 3.3 per acre. Can't you lower it down? Why don't you build beautiful homes on one lot? Think about it. You could make big bucks doing that.
I'm sorry, you just please didn't address us.
Okay.
We'll answer questions and take comments, but we don't have time to talk.
Well, I'm just saying, what you're, what you're proposing at 17 is higher density, that's, um, R3. So I would vote R1. Thank you.
Oh, come on up, if we can see if somebody's online.
If anyone's online, please raise your hand.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, for your record, Rick Pilgrim, uh, 308 Cottonwood Circle. And I missed my chance. Uh, I was looking for an open door, and I got in here late, wasn't able to sign in. Um, and I should have provided my comments for annexation. Uh, I'll follow up with, uh, with, with Cherith, because I, I think the, um, the type of development with 17 units, maximum of 17, no ADUs.
No, not no ADUs, including ADUs.
Including ADUs.
Right, just to be clear.
So a maximum of principal residences.
No, dwelling units.
It, it's just, it's not in character. And, and I think that's an important thing to consider as, uh, the city continues to fill in, in different places. Um, I, I did share some calculations, dwelling units per acre, last night. Uh, to the east of, uh, Mesa Ridge, uh, there's 10 units, and, uh, and that works out to about 2.2 units per acre. Um, for Cottonwood Green, it's a little over 3.3. Uh, for Crestone Mesa, it's 5.2. So 17 divided by the, the 2.3 acres, that's going to be 7.4 dwelling units an acre. So it's, it's just not consistent. Uh, and then you run out of town. It's, it's the open space, uh, past this woman's home, um, and it's ranch-style. So I don't understand how a central Salida-looking blockface is going to fit into the end of I, I think it, it does fit in other places more appropriately. Um, and the first time I saw the streetscape was here this evening. It's hard to react to that. Um, I do appreciate the shared driveways. I think that's going to be, um, a function that helps Crestone remain the through arterial that it is. Uh, it's not a grid system street. So, um, I don't know how to, how to offer anything different than the R2. Uh, I tend to agree with this gentleman that, you know, once, once you get to 17, uh, it's hard to go back to an R1. I don't know what to ask you. So I appreciate your, your job and what you're asked to do, um, but I think it's just too intense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bill Hussey wants to make a comment, I believe.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I'd just like to remind folks of a couple things that, uh, you know, five units and no inclusionary housing was an option here, and it's probably not the best one for the community, and I'm happy that that's not the option being presented. Um, another thing is that this has been designated as in the municipal services area since, you know, planning efforts previous to 2020. Um, and everything that's come in under those planning efforts, none of it's come in R1. Um, R1 is confined to basically the golf course to the courthouse, because that's traditionally what's been in that part of town. So we knew this was coming, we knew this was R2. To put a hard cap on a development at 17 units is an unusual step in my time doing this job. I think we're fine with that, the developer's fine with that, because that's what he intends to do, so you have some safeguards there. The last thing I want to say is when we're throwing around units per acre, it's important to know if including the roads or not, and I would assume that the numbers for Crestone and Cottonwood did include their streets. And here, I just did a quick calc. If we include the adjacent portion of Crestone Ave, that brings us to three acres, and the 17 units, uh, comes to 5.67 units per acre. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, we're done with public input? Last chance for this one? Okay, let's go.
One more. Come on down.
Good evening, I'm Pete Porman, I live at 203, uh, Cottonwood Circle in Cottonwood Green. I really appreciate your accommodating us speakers who didn't sign in tonight. It's a great opportunity to have input to the process. I wanted to comment on the context of the neighborhood around this development, which as another commenter here pointed out, doesn't seem to have been considered as we were looking at the previous decision that was made. Uh, to that end, I dug a little into the code that, in the city code, section 16-4-190, subparagraph B, item 1. Woo! The entire site, including all proposed structures, shall be of a scale that is compatible with the surrounding and nearby properties. And in this case, scale means proportional relationship to the principal buildings to each other and to the neighborhood, not just to each other, including but not limited to height, mass, setbacks, and orientation. I read that to indicate that the concerns that have been expressed here tonight about the context around it, as Rick presented just a moment ago, do need to be considered, and they, it was dismaying to see them not be part of the discussion in the previous decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Couple points of clarification, if I could. Are, are we done with public comment? Let's get out a comment and-
We have any?
Public input, and then-
Nope.
Anybody else?
You have one more?
Did you want to say something?
One more.
Last chance, okay.
Christina Frazier, um, well, I appreciate you guys have a hard job and have to make hard decisions. I'm not sure if you guys even heard what we had to say. I'm a little disappointed. This is my first opportunity to see what goes here, and I felt like I've just wasted my time, and I wish you guys would seriously listen to what the neighborhood has to say, and I don't feel like it's been listened to at all. So I just needed to express that, too. Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, just a few things. I always like to, um, provide clarification when I do hear something that, um, doesn't really line up with what we have in the code, or whatever it may be. Um, first thing, the applicant actually mentioned the, the height proposed in the new land use code, which in all likelihood, um, will be the code they'll be subject to when they're building at least some of the units. Um, the height is currently proposed as in R2 for a 28-foot average, not overall height. The third, the 35 still remains as the overall height, so you could have a pitch going up to 35, but the average of the roof would need to be at 28. Um, secondly, um, I did hear from one individual who, uh, stated that her property was in R1. Um, the property is actually in the county, um, not in the city, and it, um, I don't know the specific zoning, but I think it's an important thing to note.
Residential suburban.
Residential suburban. Um, and then, uh, lastly, the, um, not to call you out, but the, the code section that the gentleman just read from 164190, that's in regards to multiple principal structures, which is a different, uh, land use type and use, um, than what we're talking about here. That piece about scale, so.
And that the height is the same for R1 and R2?
That is correct. Currently, the residential height allowed is 35 across the board.
All right, discussion.
I have a point. Just to restate your calculation, Bill, on, on a R1 zone on this property, it would be roughly nine lots, but each could have an ADU, so, um, appropriately.
Yeah, I mean, we'd obviously have to go through a plating process to determine exactly the lot frontage and everything, but just a quick calculation of frontage is about 450 linear feet and divided by 50, which is the minimum allowed for R1, would give you nine.
Right.
And correct, one ADU per lot would be allowed.
I think the biggest, uh, difference that I see would, for this particular lot or parcel, is that back, um, area that is really undevelopable. And the difference in the setbacks for R1 and R2 would, it, I mean, I, I'm not a developer, but it seemed like it would make it almost undevelopable to apply it. Isn't it a 30-foot?
It's 30 feet front?
Front, instead of a 20?
It's 20.
So, you know, you get into a, you know, you know, an issue with what's reasonable, um, on that lot, whether, I mean, if it's R, if it were to be R1, then there would have to be, I would think, some kind of concessions, you know, for the, it, it just, it makes it more complicated to build. I mean, I don't know, I haven't looked at the math, I haven't looked at the depth and dimensions, but seems like that's a consideration.
Motion?
I think somebody else knew. I think somebody else needs to do this one.
No, I wasn't. How you guys feeling?
Tired, like all of you, probably.
I think when you start to look at the properties in the area and you look at the new land use code and its requirements, it shows some vulnerability in the code to address the concerns of the public. I mean, we're listening to people out here saying, "This isn't gonna work for us." It doesn't appear to look. And then, we're stuck with statutorily, you know, "This is a reasonable use in the current code." So, that's the challenge.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of discussion that it doesn't fit with Cottonwood Green. But right next to Cottonwood Green and basically across the street is Crestone Mesa. And this is very similar to Crestone Mesa.
We sat in this chambers and heard people say same thing and that you're gonna have more police visits.
I'm glad you saw that GIF. I wasn't around during the Crestone Mesa debate, but I mean, that was kind of my takeaway from this photo with the lot lines. It kind of seemed plausible, you know?
I think the difference is that it's on the street. It's flat. It's square. It's not in a... It's not in a parcel that has a circular road enclosed. So, it does have a different feel that way. But to the point, you know, of what is reasonable use? And, you know, I think we're, to your comments, you know, we're almost three hours in, and we're all volunteers. And yes, we are listening. We're trying our hardest to make some difficult decisions and compromise where we can. We would not have approved the motion we did had we not been listening. So, a little grace would be appreciated at almost 9 o'clock with one more to go. So, with that said, go ahead and make the motion. If you want, or we can discuss some more. Chairman?
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Go for it.
Okay. I move to recommend a city council approve the proposed zoning of 7305 County Road 160 Mesa Ridge Annexation Site to R2 Medium Density Residential Zone District as the requests meet the applicable review standards.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve recommendation to city council on R2 zoning. Any further discussion? Falee?
Yes.
Boomer?
Yes.
Crevel?
Yes.
Colby?
No.
Dervinson?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Okay. Passes recommendation to R2. Moving on. To the major impact review for the Mesa Ridge major subdivision.
Hi again. It's me. All right, last item of the evening on the new items list at least is recommendation on proposed 7305 County Road 160 Mesa Ridge Major Subdivision. Yes, we are still talking about the same project. As we know, the annexation and zoning are still in progress. We have the same applicant, again, High Desert Development, represented by Kenny Layton. A major subdivision is considered a project requiring major impact review, which must be reviewed by the Planning Commission and City Council at notice public hearings. The commission makes a recommendation for approval. The approval with conditions or denial of the request goes then to City Council. The commission may also remand the application back to the applicant for further information or amendment. So, we've already kind of been over the details of request, some of that at least in the annexation portion of tonight's presentation. But just to recap, we have a 2.3-acre lot divided into 10 lots for future residential development. The current preliminary plat shows one outlot for the purposes of the trail and access drainage easement. And the residential lots vary in size. Specific development of the lots is still conceptual, but I don't think I have to add too much more flavor to what is being proposed at this time. The applicant team has requested that the units built to satisfy the inclusionary housing requirement shall be permitted to be for sale or for rent, similar to what has been discussed in the annexation. And the applicant has also requested that the dedicated area allowed to be credited towards the developer's open space requirement be determined by taking the actual area of the land needed for construction of the trail. Again, this is the .2 acres that we've discussed. Back to the plat. On the next slide, we've already kind of showed the plat in significant amount of overview tonight, so I'm just gonna skip past that one for now. Review standards for the major subdivision. I have the overview here. Again, there's no... The proposed subdivision is keeping with these goals, and there is no construction specifically proposed as part of the subdivision. But there is adequate space on the proposed lots to comply with the standards at the time of development. No new streets are needed for the subdivision. The lots will utilize water and sewer already inside a CR160. The property is not within the 100-year floodplain and does not border a highway, so some of these are not applicable. And the proposed parcels are logically arranged. The rear of the lots encompasses the ridge line and the steeply-sloped land, which we've discussed tonight, the topography of which prohibits streets or alleys back there. All right, on the next slide, we go over some of the parks, trails, and open space. This is not different than what was proposed as part of the annexation, but might offer a little bit more flavor. As it's late, I'm going to take a second to review. So, again, the city is requiring the trail connection, which has been discussed, to connect trail systems. The applicant has requested that dedication be... Cover at least 11 lots. Now, we know potentially more than that. And the Parks and Recreation Director has agreed to accept the area required to construct the trail as credit towards the open space requirement for the 11 units. Next slide. Again, this is most of the same calculations based on the 11 units. The same language is in this agreement regarding the .28 acres satisfying 11 units, and no additional credit for units is permitted. That's a part of the condition language shown on the screen as proposed by staff. And then, again, back to the final maximum number of units allowed per lot to be decided in the subdivision improvement agreement. On the next slide, the... A few more Parks and Rec, Parks and Open Space requirements. The city will accept an easement of the area, and the plat would need to be updated. The plat would need to be updated to show the easement along the path of the trail and necessary maintenance. The trail should be constructed to city standards. The lot lines would need to extend to the north edge of the subdivision, eliminating the outlot, per conversation with the applicant team to not want that outlot, meaning that the trail would just be the dedication and the outlot would go away. Dedication language on the plat would need to be updated accordingly. A few more review standards on the next slide. Again, there's no construction specifically proposed as part of the subdivision, but there is adequate space proposed on the lots to comply with the standards. Inclusionary housing is the last item here, and the conditions are listed in very small text because I knew we would already have gone over them at this point. So, again, this is not different. This is verbatim from the annexation presentation tonight. This is... I know it's a bit redundant, but again, since the annexation and the subdivision are happening simultaneously, the language does need to match up. So, that's what is being described here in the next couple of slides.
So, Kristen, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So, since we removed the Parks and Rec open space requirement in the annexation, then I would think since they should match up, we would want to remove in the same way here. Is that correct? And push it to the development plan, the subdivision development plan?
Bill?
Well, there wouldn't be a subdivision development plan beyond the subdivision. So, they would be able to... Once it's subdivided and platted, they'd be able to come in with individual building permits at that time. So, there would be no land use review.
This is the time to make the public trail easement and Parks and Open Space dedication.
So, if we wanted to remove the trail dedication entirely and have them pay a fee in lieu, this would be where we would change that?
Yeah, I mean, if your recommendation is to not have them build the trail and instead do a fee in lieu...
Right. This would be where we would do that.
Yes, this would be where you would recommend that.
That's what I was wanting to know.
Not yet.
Please continue.
I interrupted. I think if we go one more slide, we have just some basic staff recommendations.
You had some up above, actually. There were some boilerplate ones.
Number... It starts with number two. Water and sewer system development. Sorry, I tried to keep in the same order as the review standards go. Could you go, I think, going this one here? Thank you. Sorry about that, Carolyn. Water and sewer, a system development fees would be due at time of issuance of building permit per the fee schedule in place at time. This is a pretty standard. This is not any sort of deviation. The plat shall be updated to show the easement along the path of the trail and necessary maintenance. The trail should be constructed to city standards. Lot lines... Oh, wait. I think I did go over this one. Lot lines shall extend to the back to eliminate that outlot. Developer... Oh, this last one maybe is the one I skipped. Developers shall secure agreement in writing with Heart of the Rockies Regional Medical Center to construct the trail on their property prior to recording of the plat. Okay. And then, I already... I went out of order, so we can skip the inclusionary housing fees or conditions. Okay. I think... Wow. I'm so sorry. I'm feeling very tired right now. I think that is the extent...
You're the only one in here, I'm sure.
Yes. I think that's the extent of my... Of the staff recommended conditions. And the motion is missing because my computer crashed at 5:54 PM. But it is provided on the staff report that's been provided. So, any questions that you guys have for staff at this time, I can take them.
I don't think so.
How are we? We didn't alter any of the inclusionary housing. That stayed the same.
The only thing was the Park and Rec.
Because it could still be two or three.
Right. Three or four.
Yeah, so the minimum is for two. The recommended motion currently is if they're gonna do it for rent, that'd be three.
Yeah, okay.
And then, the fee in lieu would be if they don't provide... If they do it for sale for the two and they don't provide a third, then they would provide a fee in lieu for any additional above.
Where is that in the recommended staff recommendation? What number is that? The two versus the three?
It's in the A versus the B.
It's the A versus B.
A versus B? But where does it say that they would have to have three if it's rented?
So, again, it's based off the number that will be provided in decided the subdivision improvement agreement. So, B, bullet point number one. And I apologize, some of the numbers from the presentation do not match up exactly with the staff report, and that is my fault. But it says, "At minimum, provide two rental units at a maximum of 80% AMI. If a third rental unit is provided, it shall be a maximum of 100% AMI. All rental units must be rented out by the developer or by someone like CHD."
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify that a little.
Still not sure I'm following all that.
Any other questions? Kristen, right now?
I think Francie, if I... Sorry, councilman. Oh, my gosh. Planning Commissioner Boomer.
Commissioner. We're not councilmen. We're not.
All these council meetings, too. I think what we're going for here is, in the subdivision improvement agreement, is also going to be the inclusionary housing agreement. And once we kind of work... Continue to work with the developer on the number of units per lot that will be built, we can start to narrow down.
It does say, "If a third rental unit is provided."
Yes.
But we might clarify. Why, maybe we'll save that for discussions.
Right. Yeah, it's... That would be BI.
Okay. Anything else for staff?
That's it for now. Thank you.
Thanks.
Kenny?
Anything to add?
I mean, we have... I feel like I've already presented the subdivision twice at this point. Not necessarily. I think, to clarify on the IH units, you know, we have always come from the perspective that... You know, we've always heard that the city needs units now. And so, that's where building two units in the very front end of this project has come from. You know, we're not... We're trying to front-load that and respond to that request and overqualify what we potentially could do. So, I don't know. I just want to reiterate that. And you've seen the... If we have those slides, that might be helpful.
Yours, your slides?
Yep. Major sub. Yeah, so this is the subdivision. A couple things in terms of the trail and the discussion around the trail. You know, our request would be to build the trail and qualify for 14... The open space fees credit of 14 units like we normally would. Or we could... Or we would prefer to pay the fee in lieu. I think you're in kind of a tough position. I mean, this has been a hard thing for us to figure out this whole process because, you know, we met with the CEO of the hospital this morning. He seems very amenable to the trail. But I do feel like number four, putting the onus on us to make... I mean, I don't... I can't make a decision for the hospital board. You know, we can only do the best we can to present an acceptable trail to them. I feel like that is onus that should be on the city to negotiate. I mean, ultimately, it's gonna be the city's easement and the hospital... The hospital board or the hospitals agreement that this is an appropriate thing for both parties. I feel caught in the middle on that one. And so, I'm really hesitant to... I don't know how we feel about being required to negotiate on behalf of the city for a trail that, as we've heard tonight, seems to have limited support, especially in the immediate community. I'm kind of rambling at this point. Sorry.
Hang in there, bud.
You know, we've modeled the subdivision off of some of the principles we've seen that we feel are really successful in other parts of town. You know, some of the neighborhoods that have been listed off tonight are very popular neighborhoods. I mean, they are neighborhoods that people seek out. And, you know, they... Like Crestone Mesa is a great example of that. There's a lot of characteristics in what we're thinking about doing that are mimicked there. And, you know, we've... These houses do not... They don't take up the whole building envelope. The fire department limits us at 150 feet from the road. And you can see that on our plat. You can kind of see... Yeah. First, you know, this line here is the reach of a fire hose when the truck comes out here and parks on the curb. So, we can't build past that. So, we still have additional land that's not on the ridge. This idea that, you know, it's too tight. I mean, we can build some really nice modest homes in this environment, like in this layout. But, yeah, we hope you'll consider.
So, you don't have a problem with the two, maybe three, inclusionaries?
Well, the two, the two, maybe three was just our way to say.
Based on?
We're gonna build two, and we hope to build three, but the, the third one is that, you know, if we, if we limit ourselves to 11 units and we, we decide to go, then we're, then we've already built more than we need.
Got two.
Yeah, we've got two, if we build 14, we'll build two and decide if we can pay fees or negotiate that third unit, so.
Good.
Yeah. I'm gonna, Bill Hussey, I'm gonna pull him in just a little bit because, you know, the nuts and bolts of this subdivision creation, he's pretty adept at. I just wanna make sure that there's nothing he wants to add. Bill, are you online?
Yeah, I think I just wanna clarify that the staff recommendation is requiring us to build three if they're gonna be rentals. And I guess I would push back a little bit on that, um, because we also heard from staff that rentals are what there seems to be more demand for at the moment. So I think we wanna not penalize a developer and eventually more than likely end up penalizing the housing trust for trying to rent these things. That hopefully, at the end of the day, it'll work out that they can build three, but if they get caught where fee in lieu is the best option, um, for, you know, they'd build the two, they might get caught where fee and lose the best option to cover the last five. We would like to keep that option on the table. I mean, I think most all of you heard me give a presentation a couple of weeks ago asking for some much larger developments to be allowed to do one in six rental units when the rest of the development was for sale. And I thought that was very well received, and that's, you know, that's the basis that those developers are proceeding on at the moment. So I'm hoping that that is, um, hoping that the, the two rentals are okay to cover in fee and lose an option for the last five.
I think item B addresses that, um, says any required fractional inclusionary housing unit shall also be built. So I'm not, I, I'm hearing what is being said, and that was. We'll talk about it in commissioner comments, but I think that was my concern as well.
Are you reading from the most up-to-date staff report?
Yeah, it cra, it, it took out IE three built units minimum, but it says that if there's a fractional unit, it would be a built unit, that there wouldn't be a, a fee in lieu option, is what I'm, how I'm reading it? Is that how you're reading it too, Karen? Yep?
Yeah, so, uh, B says if the developer chooses to deviate from strict application of the code, i.e. by providing rental units, any required fractional inclusionary housing unit shall also be built.
Right, which is where you get into the having to build three rather than paying the, paying the fee in lieu.
Correct, yeah.
Which I don't, I don't, I know, we'll get into.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that that's what's on the table.
Yes, yes, right.
So I'm maybe not even clear on what I might be agreeing to here. If I read this, A is the traditional.
Yes.
I'm required to provide.
For sale.
Every sixth.
For sale.
Is for sale, but, but it's every sixth. So I could do nine units and one inclusionary housing unit. I could do one inclusionary housing unit to cover five, and then I could do four additional units and pay fee in lieu. That's the, that's option A, correct?
Is that right, Bill?
Yes.
Well.
Kristen?
No, it's, it says at minimum, provide two for sale.
Two.
So the recommended condition is that regardless, we're asking for for sale or for rent, that two units, two inclusionary housing units be built.
Right, and, and my only question, as it were, was if you go to a rental, this seems to lock you into a third one where, right, rather than paying a, a fee in lieu, which I don't know.
My understanding of the annexation was that was supposed to be the option that we were providing by, and maybe any other, by building the two units up front ahead of schedule. But, you know, we're planning on building two units.
I think what we said too was that with past experiences with sales and rentals that, like, if you were working with the housing trust, they would be allowed to rent those.
Sure, that's.
So maybe they would not count as pure rental units if, cause indeed, they would ideally sell those, that's what they would wanna do. So.
So maybe this would only apply if you were building rental units?
Yeah, I mean, I think what we're trying to protect us against is, like, there's not a lot of qualified buyers in a pipeline right now. And so.
Yeah.
And we've seen instances in the community where homes have sat for a long time, we're looking for flexibility to kind of protect the owners of these properties there.
I, I guess, to clarify, if your intent when you built the units was to have them be rented permanently, not even try to sell them.
Right.
Then this would apply, you'd have to build three if there was a fractional.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm.
If you're building it with the intention to sell it, Shafer Housing Trust, you know, needs time to qualify the buyers, which I know they do with the rural loans.
Sure.
Then it can be rented in the meantime. That's how I see it, is that how you see it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that how you see it?
I don't, I don't think it's super clear, but. I don't think now's the time to hammer it out.
No, no, it's the same thing we just passed in the annexation.
Anyways, do you have any other additional questions for?
Any other questions for Kenny?
God help us now.
In terms of the design of the, of the path, is there a requirement for a setback from adjacent properties?
No, the, the path is, um, the path is a 10-foot easement off the eastern property boundary.
Talking the actual path?
Actual path, right.
But then there's a setback off of the path for the lot.
Only on the new development, not on the lot line of the.
Yeah, I mean, the, the path runs, the path runs along that eastern property boundary and then ducks down the hill.
Right, so it's right on the line.
Your, your lot 10 abuts that.
And there's a five, I believe there's a five-foot setback.
Off of the trail boundary, not the property boundary.
Yeah, that's, that, that would be a normal setback. Like, that five feet.
Off of the trail.
Is a side, is the normal side setback.
But there wouldn't be a setback on the existing property, it's right on the property line.
Correct, correct, yeah.
To be, to be clear, so lot 10 encompasses, would encompass the easement for the trail, which is 10 feet wide. And because the normal setback, side yard setback is five feet, technically, a building could be built right up to that trail easement.
Yeah.
If that is your question, there's no additional, there's no additional setback.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's my question, thanks, Paul.
And the trail could be built right up to the adjacent properties.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, so that, that dotted line that's shown off of the easement there, that should not exist, actually, it should go straight to the easement.
Yeah, but it shows five, it shows five feet there, so.
You could have house, middle of the, um, trail, and another five feet.
Yep, I think we're getting into commissioner.
Yeah, we're getting into discussion, alright.
We have more, more public comment.
Any other questions for Kenny? We may have some, so.
Stay close.
Thank you.
Don't leave yet.
Yeah. Okay, anybody?
Okay. Paul, are you ready?
He's been waiting three hours for this.
I'm Paul Jensen, I live at 309 Cottonwood Circle. I didn't think it was gonna take this long to get up to speak, though. My first comment was the public notice that was posted on the property was a very small sign, a small black and white sign, right in line with post office, or post box on the street. It was not noticeable at all, and I, I thought that zoning should use a much larger sign to notify people that, it probably meets the requirement, but it's not very adequate for letting people know. When I stopped to read the sign and it said 10 lots, and then later I heard that it would be 17 units, I just don't think this is fitting for our neighborhood. And the 17 units, they're only required to have one off-street parking spot. Very few families have only one vehicle, so then you're probably gonna have 17 vehicles parked on the street on Crestone there. Even if they have shared driveways, that's still a lot of vehicles in a not a very large space. I've heard a couple times where they're trying to compare this to Crestone Mesa, and it's not similar at all because Crestone Mesa is a subdivision all by its own. Their off-street parking, um, they do have an alleyway where they can park in the alley, but if you drive in that subdivision, the streets are very, very crowded, and if you meet another vehicle oncoming, you're gonna have to look for a, a gap in the parked vehicles to pass. Crestone and County Road 160 is a major street coming into the city. It's also gonna be a problem in the wintertime for the county plowing snow if there's a lot of vehicles parked on that street. I was gonna comment a lot about the trail, but if that's not gonna apply now, is that correct? We don't know.
We don't know.
My wife and I hike the trail from the hospital quite often, and we hike it in both directions. It's very adequate trail. This trail that's proposed is totally unnecessary, and I think it's very unfair to the adjacent property owner to stick this right on their property line. That's just not a, a good thing to do. And somebody mentioned it's gonna be an iced-up trail that's unusable in the wintertime anyway. Then they said the west end of the hospital trail doesn't have legal access out to the county road. I don't, I don't know if I misunderstood that or not, but it seems like if it doesn't, that trail was built by the hospital, and if you're gonna negotiate with the hospital to connect a trail through a private subdivision, it would be easy to, to get a agreement between the hospital and the county to access the county road there. I've lost track of my notes. Those are the main things I want to mention. I just, I just think the density of all these, um, units on Crestone, it does not fit to the feel of the subdivision. If you look straight across in Cottonwood Green, you have, you know, 10 of these lots matching up with four or five of the lots in our subdivision, and it just doesn't fit. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for staying late.
And thank you for staying late. Who's next?
Who else?
Who else wants to speak?
Do you want me to go down the list again?
Yes.
I can, Wendy left, I think. Larita?
Yes. Of all, thank you, I'm Larita Groover, you know where I live. Of all the residences impacted by the trail the most, it's us. Without any warning at all, and I read the paper, I used to be a journalist, and when this pre-conceptual review happened in February, Diesel Post's response was, "Don't do it, it's a liability, ask the developer to pay the fees." And now there's a big about-face that this develop, this developer should get this, and let's do it, and let's have the, the hospital down below say it's okay and make this connection. So now I'm looking at this proposal, and not only are you placing this trail right on my property line, 10 feet out, he doesn't even have to have a five-foot setback to build a house? That's what I just heard somebody clarify, am I correct? That's really, really nasty and mean.
From the, just to be clear, from the trail easement, so there's, it would be a minimum of 10 feet from your property line, heading west, so there's that minimum easement area for the trail, but technically, as of right now, there would be no additional setback.
Yeah, so he gets his trail, so he saves money, and then he doesn't even have to move the, the house or the duplex or multifamily whatever, even over five feet. Would you like this to happen to you? It's really just unimaginably hateful to do this to people, and nobody is talking about the wildlife. Did any of you, or you, ask the Colorado Parks and Wildlife, what is going on, on that spot in the mesa when all these fences have been built from Mesa Lane all the way to the west? There's very few places where the animals can move up. We're not exaggerating, we take pictures of them, we count them going up from below, across and back. Everybody knows that lives there, slow down at sunset, slow down at the, early in the morning, and nobody seems to be caring about that either. He doesn't seem to be living and dying on a trail. He almost seems to be, being flexible in a problem solver, which I appreciate. You don't have to put a trail there that's unnecessary and unwarranted, and even Mr. Post said at the beginning, "It's too risky." It's too risky. It also is risky to us. It, it affects our safety and our security. And I care very much for the wildlife. This conflict between wildlife and congested, compressed, dense subdivision just keeps the tension higher and higher, and it's at risk for everyone. I'm asking, please do not accept this trail in any form. It's almost just like a nightmare to hear what's possible to do to someone that lives in this community. For so long. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel it's really important to speak to the ADUs that you spoke to earlier. Just to clarify, cause I can see there's confusion with you all about what an ADU is and what it means.
No, there's not.
Yes, there is some confusion, because he said that 17 buildings could be constructed there, and in those 10 lots, you can also apply for, that's why he said he didn't, can't, don't, don't limit it to 17 because of ADUs in, in your verbiage. An ADU, what an ADU is, just to be clear, is a smaller unit, not the size that he's planning on building, not the large 1700, 2200 square feet, they're limited to 1,000 square feet. They're one-story, they're small, they're out of the way, and you have to apply for them in the future. So any one of the 10 lots could say, "Okay, yeah, we, we wanna get an ADU, pop it in back there." So now what you're talking about, possibly, if each of those 17 different entities could do it, you're talking about maybe 27 buildings. Why are you shaking your head?
The motion that was made restricted it to 17 dwelling units, including ADUs. That was in the motion for the annexation.
Okay, then, then that's, that's perfect, because that would limit them, and, and you were saying that, no, you shouldn't, because that would limit their ability to have.
I, I didn't say you should or shouldn't, I just was getting clarification if the intent was to include ADUs.
And remember that council makes the final decision, we're recommending to council, and that's what we've recommended to council.
I understand, but I wanted.
17, maximum of 17 dwelling units. That doesn't even mean there will be 17.
But to be clear.
But includes any dwelling unit which would include an auxiliary dwelling unit, an ADU.
And those are limited to 1,000 square feet?
They are limited to 1,000.
And they used to be called mother-in-law houses.
1,000 square feet if they're on single, if they're on one level, 800 square feet if they are.
On top of a garage.
On top of a garage.
Yes, I know.
And they can also be attached ADU, attached to a building, not separate, like, like an upper floor can be an ADU. So dwelling units means, that's what, when I made that motion.
Okay.
That's what was decided.
Then I laud you for that motion, limiting to 17, including ADUs.
Dwelling units. Anybody else?
Mary Ann?
It's next.
We're all tired.
We are exhausted, aren't we all?
So this is what I wanna know. Everybody has the right to apply for permits and to buy land and to develop land, and I get that, and that you have to follow laws, and so does the, the proposed developer. How much weight does the community have? Cause we've all seen development happen, and often with a lot of neighborhood pushback. And it seems like it happens so often, so we're all here, we all have our opinions, how much does that matter? How much weight goes into that? I don't really.
So I'm Michelle Aguero and I know why this family is so passionate about the land. But if you can expand that picture, and see the blue roof right there, if you can expand it.
We see it, yeah.
And so all of what you're talking about is that trail going right next to their home and then there's a 10-foot trail.
Talk in, please, you need to speak into the mic, sorry.
And then a 10-foot trail and then a five-foot easement and then you've got a home. So you're looking at 15 feet, and I'm not an expert, but that's probably here from their ADU with the trail in between and easement and then a home. And they've been living here for how long to have that big, massive structure built right in their back and destroying all their views? So I just wanted to bring that up, that 15 feet is not very far from the path to where their home's going to be built.
I hear you.
I want to say one last thing.
Okay.
Be quick. I think we all knew that there were going to be buildings built there.
Speak into the microphone, please, and speak to us.
I think we all knew, it was not a surprise, we just thought it would be a matter of time before something was built there.
I think I'm speaking for the rest of the audience here.
Our thought was it would be a continuation of the houses that were built along that street. And it's just a surprise. I live in Crestone Mesa, I know that the same arguments were made when that housing addition went in too, but it's apples and oranges. And we'd just like for you to keep the symmetry of the houses down that street, that was what we would like you to consider.
Thank you.
Anthony?
Nobody else?
Matt?
I think it's important to reiterate some of the comments that have been previously made about comparing this subdivision to other subdivisions throughout Salida. This road, I'm going to call it a connector, you can call it whatever you want. Any other subdivision that has lots this narrow, 37 feet on the, the short side or 35, they all lie on local roads that aren't connector roads like Crestone. Not only that, most of them also have alleyways like Crestone Mesa that was mentioned as well. So I think trying to like, put this into perspective around like, oh, Salida builds a lot of like narrow lots, this is a common thing. We don't really have narrow lots like this throughout Salida on these major connector roads. Drive down Airport Road, those subdivisions have their own local roads. Go down, you know, whatever, First Street, if you want to think of that as a connector, you don't see this where there's a single access point, a driveway, no alleyway. And, and on a, a major like thoroughfare so that people trying to get out of the city drive down this road. And like people were mentioning, from a traffic perspective, it's going to create a, a bunch of congestion here. I, I live right behind, my house backs up to Crestone. People speed down that road, like, people go fast down it. And if we're going to have a lot of required street parking because of the density of the units, I think it's going to create a slightly hazardous position, not, not for me leaving my neighborhood, but for the people living in this subdivision. Because they're going to be backing out with cars parked on their side of the roads, backing onto the street where there is a slight blind corner when you're coming from the west around that corner. You can't really see around it because of the trees there. And so it's going to create a hazard for some of those units that are sort of like really closely packed together as well. So I, I think that like trying to compare this subdivision to other subdivisions is perhaps like not appropriate in this context. I mean, I, I think that there was a comment that like there was a proposal to build four or five single-family homes on this unit or on this lot. Had that been the proposal, I don't think you would have seen any of us here today. Right? Like, and so, like, and, and, you know, building these 12, and the developer maybe was okay with building fewer houses or whatever, I'm, I'm not sure, I haven't talked to them before, but this like one lot isn't solving like the housing crisis in Salida. Like, we have a lot of development going on everywhere in terms of affordability. Last point, if this does get subdivided in the way that it's described, I would be in favor of the rental proposition. I think rentals are needed in Salida and so keeping that as an option for the developer, I think is really important, as they've described and probably you all are aware, but I, I just wanted to say if this subdivision is approved, I would want to ensure that that rental option is included. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Donella? Oh, you came up already. Christina, did she leave?
Anybody else?
Sheriff?
Uh, all.
Okay. Rip? Pete?
No, thank you.
And Michelle, you are, did you, you just came up, didn't you? Yeah. Okay, is there anyone online?
Nope. We're good.
Bill has.
Oh, Bill has his hand up again, Bill Hussey.
Bill, are you there?
Go ahead.
Yep, just really quickly, we've heard parking a few times.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Bill Hussey represents the applicant, so he should not be allowed to talk as part of public comment.
He's also a citizen.
It's up to the chairman to allow it.
Yeah, I, it's, I'm, I'm allowing it.
All right, Bill.
Parking has come up a few times, so I just want to reiterate that the development is proposing to meet the code on parking and also that it doesn't matter how much garage you give Salida folks, we're going to fill it with stuff and park on the street. I'm glad that speeds on County Road 160 finally come up because on-street parking is one of the few known ways to slow down speeds on a road. And I, I think that's all I got for right now. Thank you.
Okay, close public comment.
Okay.
Should we?
Anybody else on there? Okay, we're going to close public comment.
I need another break.
Okay, do you need another break?
I need another break, sorry.
Okay, we're going to take a quick break.
We're trying really, really hard to listen and to make good compromises, to create some affordable housing, to, to limit the number of units so that even if this developer doesn't happen in the annexation agreement, that, that was settled. So that's my opinion, I don't know what the rest of you think, but I'm putting my chip down, so, there we go.
I'm not happy with the developer and the city later on.
Well, that's up to them, that's, that's not.
No, it should not be up, there should be no trail built on this property.
All we can do is what we got in front of us.
Well, we can rec, we can.
Make recommendations.
We can, we can make a recommendation that no trail is built on this property.
And furthermore, you know, there were concerns made about wildlife access, right? Open space. What's wrong with having a wildlife corridor there instead? I mean, I'm not, you know, an expert on any of this, but by, by saying no trail, it opens it up to other opportunities. And we always hear from Parks and Rec about, "We don't have enough money, we don't have enough money for what we want to do."
Give them some money.
Give them, give them the money.
All right. And whatever happens down the road, happens down the road, that's out of our control.
And then you get back to the other discussion, is should that land be dedicated to the city as open space? Which hasn't even been put on the table.
The, the city, sure.
The, the area that was allocated for the trail, you know, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it has open space and then the city could turn it into a trail.
Right, yeah, I don't think so.
The thing is, the thing is, what, with the wildlife, I agree, we haven't really spoken much about the wildlife corridor. I don't know, you know, I know nothing about wildlife. I don't know if dedicating one lot, two lots would be sufficient. I, I just don't know. And I also don't know, I mean, there is still open space to the west, you know, could that be the wildlife corridor? I don't know. I mean, I think before we make this decision, we need input from someone who has knowledge of that. I mean, I don't think anybody here would.
I mean, you, you, I'll speak to it a little bit, you don't, you don't create wild, like real wildlife corridors in, in a city, right? Like, a wildlife corridor would go around Salida. I appreciate that like deer are moving around town, but like, a, a, like, you've already messed up wildlife corridors with every subdivision you've done in here. I, I can appreciate other impacts of the trail and I think we should keep talking about those, but I, I think this notion like you're going to put a little wildlife corridor in there, like, you know, deer are going to move around, but like, we should be focused elsewhere for wildlife habitat, this is not the place to fall in that sort of.
So let's continue to talk about the trail.
Well, let's just have them pay the fee in lieu.
I mean, it sounds like there have been some discussions with the city and the city is.
Is hell-bent.
Parks has made this request and now it's up to us, I think, to say either, we agree with that request, let's recommend it to council.
Or we don't.
Or we've heard a lot of input tonight that maybe this isn't the most appropriate place for a trail. We recommend that you have them pay the fee in lieu, it goes towards the other parks' budget.
Right.
And that's our recommendation.
We, we just had a conversation about.
I would support that as well.
The four acres or.
Recommendation to.
In places to age.
I guess, can I make a comment on the trail? I, I totally understand the concerns about privacy, but we saw the map earlier, there is no north-south connection in the middle of town and whether it's this trail or another trail, I, I'm just kind of putting it out there.
There is a connection, right?
Give me a second here, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The hospital's right there, that's a major anchor on the north side of town and they have the golf course right there. But logically, that makes a lot of sense. I understand the privacy concerns. And I'm kind of balancing it because I kind of think of it in my head as a sidewalk. People walk down, like, a lot of us have sidewalks in front of our house, I get that this is very close to the abutting property. So I guess I just want to put that out there. We keep saying, "No, no, no," but the fact is, we do have to provide access to our citizens to get places, whether it's here or somewhere else.
Yeah.
Like, we need to figure that out.
Yeah, I, I hear that. I would recommend, like, you, I think the golf course connection makes sense, I think that's the big barrier moving north to south. And then getting a public easement on the hospital trail cuts it down from a half-mile to substantially less and.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, be my recommendation.
Just, just a clarification, you know, we said 17 maximum dwelling units. So let me propose a scenario. Kenny builds the first three units, he sells them. And before he builds anything more, people come in with a building permit request for an ADU. That's within code, so.
They're, they're the three of your 17.
It's fine with me, but I just.
It's tricky.
That's.
That's, I, kind of Kenny's problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I think if you think it through, you know, I, I will also say that I think you need a homeowners association to take care of the, the property behind. I think to leave it to individual homeowners to take care of their strip, you know, just look around town, some will, some won't. You know, I've got stuff across the street from me and on the side of me that doesn't look anything like what I have in my, in front of my house. So if you had a homeowners association that would dedicate, you know, have a, a fee assessment to take care of that property behind there, I think it would go a long way, not only for the, the value of the, of the properties that you're developing, but also for the, the look and feel of the neighborhood. I mean, it's kind of wild, so it doesn't need to be mowed, you know, it's not grass, but you could really do some really interesting things with native plants and that sort of thing and it would be a value to the, to the subdivision. So that's just my, had nothing to do with this in my two cents. Should we make a motion?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I would like to recommend to council.